Welcome to the East Bridgewater School Committee meeting of June 6, 2019. We opened the meeting at 5:30 and went into executive session, so at this time we can continue on with the meeting. We have some retirees here this evening. We have Mrs. Christine Alice and also Mrs. Christine DiLorenzo. Mrs. Alice, she is at the Gordon W. Mitchell School and she's a sixth grade teacher. She's been here from 2004 to 2019 for a total of 15 years. And we have Mrs...oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. We don't have Mrs. DiLorenzo. We have Mrs. Linda McStowe. I'm so sorry. I was looking at you thinking...she is with the Central School Teaching Assistant and Administrative Assistant from 1986 to December of 2018. That is a very long time. That's a total of 32 years in this district. We also have some retirees who are not with us this evening. That's Mrs. Christine DiLorenzo, Central School Kindergarten and Second Grade Teacher from 1977, November of 2018, for a total of 41 years. Mrs. Joanne O'Brien, East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School Business Teacher from 1994 to 2019, 25 years. And Mrs. Jerry Quigley, Central School Adjustment Counsel from 2008 to 2019, for 11 years. Thank you for coming tonight. It's a warm welcome for you two. We appreciate all of the service that you've given to this district and everything that you've done for the kids. And I know that Superintendent Legault and possibly Dr. Williams, they've been with...Dr. Williams has been with you for a long time. And Superintendent Legault probably has things that they would like to say, I'm sure.
Go ahead.
I feel like we've had these opportunities a couple of times and it's still shocking to me to think that there's no Linda McStowe as part of Central School. The first face that you would always see. I think maybe the parents and the students' very first memory of Central School is knowing Mrs. McStowe and the fact that they'd be amazed that she knew them before they actually even started at Central School. They'd come in for their appointment and she'd say, "Oh, you must be..." And they would look at her and go, "I've been doing things all summer long with your name all over it." And I tell the story all the time. I mean, as we worked together for 10 years as I was the building principal, I would text her on the weekends. I'd text her at night because I'd be somewhere and I'd run into someone and I would know the student and I wouldn't know the parent's name. And I would text her, "Who is so-and-so's mom?" And she would text right back and tell me exactly who it was. So she was a gift, you know, to not only the students and the parents, but the staff members. And I know, you know, as great of a job as the people that are there are now, you just can't fill Linda McStowe's shoes, so.
Size enough.
So I know she'll be truly missed and never be forgotten.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I will add that we will miss you when it comes to dealing with Lucini in the fall and getting the bus trips accurate and picking up at the houses and understanding that kindergarteners can't walk that far. And even if we do pick up all of our kindergarteners, they still can't walk that far. You've been a champion of all of our students over there. And I think my biggest moments are going into that building and sitting there in the chair waiting to go in and see Kate. Every student would walk through the door. You knew. And the day I remember the most is that little girl who came in and she said...and you said, "Right, you lost your tooth. Your mom's on the way. It's gonna be okay. We lose 'em all the time." And the little girl went over and she went...Mrs. McStowe went like this. She goes, "I can go back." And then, "Go back." And I stood there and I was like, "Ah, this is her first tooth." Or, well, those are special moments. And, you know, usually moms and dads see those. And I think Mrs. McStowe called that mom and that mom came in and that tooth was given back to that mom. And for me to watch that and to see the care that you've given to all of our children, you are queen and you were queen for the day. You'll always be our queen of Central School. So thank you so much, Mrs. McStowe.
Very much.
Mr. Gentile? I know that he wanted to speak for Mrs. Alice this evening.
Good evening, thank you. Just to say a couple of words, we had a nice celebration for Mrs. Alice the other day. After having been at the Mitchell School for 12 years, I was able to have a lot of opportunities to work with Christine around specific student issues, around curriculum, working with parents, developing relationships. And when we met with our staff the other day, we talked about some of the things that come to mind when I think of Christine and the work that she's done over the years that I've been fortunate enough to work with her. She's an incredibly empathetic, kind, and dedicated educator. Really took time to understand her students, to try and meet their needs, whatever those needs were, whether they were of an academic nature or otherwise, and always went above and beyond. As a matter of fact, as recently as today, I shared some data with my staff, some individual teacher data with the staff, and Christine was one of a few people who has already responded with some very thorough and diligent input and thoughts around her students' data and just student achievement at our school in general. And I think being a few days away from your last day at the Mitchell School and to still have that kind of passion and focus just speaks to the person and educator that you are. So on behalf of myself, Mrs. Dupre, the staff at the Mitchell School, past coworkers and administrators, thank you for everything. You've really made a difference in a lot of kids' lives.
There are some delicious items to eat on that table. There are some cupcakes that were specially for you two.
If you...do you want to address...do you want to say anything, Mrs. McStowe or Mrs. Alice?
You don't have to if you don't want to.
Oh, let's see if I can whine something. So, come right here.
Right here?
Have a seat.
Sure, have a seat.
You've earned it.
Hello, School Committee. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
How is everybody? Central School, no. I just want to thank the community. I'm probably gonna cry now. I feel that I was blessed and privileged to be at that Central School for almost half my life, actually. My children went there. They graduated through East Bridgewater, college, everything. We played sports at East Bridgewater. We did everything. And then it came around again and I began to see students that they graduated with and their families coming through the Central School. So everything evolved over and over again. But the staff, the principals that I worked with were just amazing people. They're dedicated, they're compassionate, willing to help out in any way. We were such a great team with George and Gina and Kate and I...that's the part that I miss when I retire is seeing those faces every day. They're like family. And even Liz has come on board and I have enjoyed working with her and we've had some funny times together. Short time, but we did have some fun times. But it's just an amazing school to work at. The people there are so dedicated and the kids just thrive there. We just have a lot of opportunity for them and everybody is just unbelievably supportive to not only the students, but the families as well and the faculty to each other. Had a lot of fun times. Thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. I will miss everyone.
All the best.
Thank you for taking care of my voice.
Thank you, everybody. First of all, I'd like to thank the School Committee for giving us this very nice honor to recognize us. And thank you for all your hard work that you do for our school. You don't have easy jobs and I know you have to make a lot of difficult decisions, but I know that you're there for the kids. And just know that I'm a teacher that does appreciate that you always try your best to do whatever you can, what you're capable of doing. And I know you can't always do what you want to do, but I know that you guys usually get the job done as best as you can, and so thank you. And I would just like to say again, thank you to Mr. Gentile and Mrs. Dupre and the staff at the middle school. I stood on the shoulders of giants. I came in teaching when I was 40, so that's a different experience. And so the people there, the young ones that had already been there for a while and others were so welcoming and so supportive. And I've learned so much from my colleagues. And so to them, I give a big thank you and I wish everybody all the best.
Congratulations. Good luck in your life.
Everybody that wanted to sign the clipboard if they wanted to speak during the public comments section. I'm just gonna come and take this report.
Like choking.
Nope, nobody else wants to sign it. Bear with me while I read my little spiel. So there are a large number of members in the public...of the public presence this evening. The committee sets aside a time for visitor comments on our agenda. Generally, that time does not exceed five to 10 minutes, but there...I have...sorry, that's okay. But there are many members of the public here this evening and I will allocate 20 minutes for visitor comments. There was a sign-up sheet at the entrance to the room for members of the public who wish to speak. If you have not signed the sheet, I just asked you that. So I will recognize each member of the public who has signed up to speak in order of the sign-up until we have reached 20 minutes. In accordance with school committee...but we have five people, so that won't be fine. In accordance with school committee policy, B-E-D-H, public comment at school committee meetings, each person recognized shall have up to two minutes to speak. And Tim McLaughlin will inform the speaker when the speaker has reached one minute and 30...one minute and 30 seconds. That speaker has 30 seconds remaining. No person may speak until recognized by the chair and each speaker must stop at or before two minutes. If the speaker does not end before two minutes, Tim McLaughlin will indicate that the speaker has reached two minutes. In order that all individuals who wish to be heard before the committee have an opportunity to speak and to ensure the ability of the committee to conduct the district's business in an orderly manner and in compliance with the open meeting law, the committee has adopted and will be adhering to the following public comment rules and procedures. One, all individuals who wish to speak during the public comment period must identify themselves by name. Speakers must address the full committee through the chair and may not address individual members of the committee. The public comment period is not an open, public forum. Speakers may address topics on the agenda, items specified for public comment, or items within the scope of the school committee's responsibility. Each speaker will be afforded the same amount of time to speak. Speakers who exceed their allotted time will be ruled out of order. No individual may speak more than once at a single meeting. Any individual who wishes to address the committee for longer than their allotted time should submit their comments in writing to the committee either before or after the meeting. Remarks that are discriminatory, profane, vulgar, threatening, or harassing are not permitted. I'd like to say, welcome, everyone. We're glad we have you all in attendance this evening. We don't usually have this many people. We don't even have a quarter of this many people. So I'm happy to see that we have people in the audience. And at this time, I would like to recognize Jonathan Babcock. Would you please come to the microphone to speak and please identify yourself?
Welcome.
Welcome back to the table, Jonathan. Thank you. I'm here to speak particularly about action item number five on tonight's agenda. Quite frankly, I was flabbergasted when I read this action item. This pertains to the bylaw amendment that I had petitioned to put on the town warrant, which would require the school committee's approved budget to go before the town for a vote. The town doesn't have to accept it. It would also require that the town put together a budget both for the approved school budget and for, you know, any number that's different that the selectmen choose. Again, the town's not required to vote for the approved school budget, but this at least gets our budget number up there. You know, the idea is that this would help encourage the town and the schools to work together. As I'm sure you all know, for the last 10 years, the selectmen have not been using our approved number. And last year, we had actually outvote them to get the approved number up. So I'm shocked to see the way this is phrased. It says that the school committee will vote to state publicly that it does not support petitioned Article 11. First of all, I've never seen an action item phrased this way. It's usually the school committee will vote to support or not support. So I'm just wondering why it was phrased this way and what the school committee's thoughts are on this article. I see no reason the school committee wouldn't endorse this.
We can...we're not responding. We're listening to people with their public comments, but we're not responding right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Next up, we have Julian Osborne. Please come to the microphone. Okay.
Yeah, have a seat.
Welcome.
Stand still, whatever works for you.
Okay. Someone to start. Good evening, everyone. My name is Julian Osborne. I'm a junior here and I organized today's protest. It was far from perfect, but please don't let the kids just there to skip class overshadow those who were there because they care about their school. Before I start, I'd like to distance myself and the rest of the series protesters from the students who did that. To begin, the biggest issue the protest was held over today was the fact that teachers don't feel as though the administration is listening to them. In my conversations with teachers and those of others, it's become clear that they don't feel their opinions are valued when making decisions...when making decisions much of the time. Neither I nor any other student has had...has been able to listen in on every conversation between student...between teachers and administration individually or as a union. Unless we don't know the exact details of all the issues that they feel they haven't been heard out on. They've been very professional not going off about that, by the way. Regardless, when the student...when the teachers' union feels it necessary to have a show of unity in the parking lot before school starts for two Wednesdays in a row now, something is clearly not right. I, as well as many as the other...I, as well as the other series protesters today, ask that you work with the union on whatever issues that may arise to an extent that they no longer feel that such shows of unity are necessary to gain the administration's attention. Our second issue is...was over the restriction of teachers to one AP class per year. When you see someone like Mr. Siddiqui, our AB and BC calculus teacher who is honored at the White House as teacher of the year for Massachusetts, and you look at the average scores his students get on the AP exams, it becomes clear that someone like him is not teaching worse because of the workload that comes with teaching multiple APs. That might not be the case for all teachers, though, and so if a teacher's average score...exam scores aren't satisfactory, it makes sense to maybe limit them to one AP if that is what the issue is. This should be dealt with on a case-by-case basis, though. Sorry. And not with a blanket rule. Before my two minutes are up, I'd like to say thank you to Superintendent Legault for acknowledging the students' First Amendment right to protest and to the workers from the Police Department and Fire Department who were there making sure everyone was safe today. I've sent out a letter to...or I will be sending out a letter to the superintendent and assistant superintendent going further into detail about various issues and I'd love to speak with you in person sometime soon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for speed reading that. You did it all in a lot of time. That's great. We have Nicole...I'm sorry, I don't...Muncy? I don't know. What is it?
Muncy?
Muncy, sorry about that. Please come up to the mic. Welcome.
Thank you. Nicole Muncy, I'm a parent. I have a junior and a sophomore currently in the school. I have...my daughter graduates class of 2018. I came requesting information about the curriculum pertaining to the AP courses and the rumor of the eight scheduled class blocks that didn't seem to make a lot of sense to anyone that I'm aware of. I don't know if it's just a rumor. I also like to say Mr. Siddiqui is more than capable of teaching more than one AP class. My daughter received a five in her calculus exam. Shox received a five in the APUSH exam. So whatever these teachers are doing are appropriate. I don't think that the children should be fit into a box and taught that way. I think they should be individually taught and not just put square into blocks of what you guys decide to do.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Next up, we have Mr. Kurt Shippe. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, there. Hi. I'm here at the request of my colleagues to help and try and clear the air a little bit and some of our concerns about proposed schedule changes. I'm gonna read from you a letter that a committee of us put together back in May. And it articulates some of our concerns. The context is that our teachers had just visited West Bridgewater. Educators at the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School visited West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School to study how to implement their schedule. They were excited about the educational opportunities that school provides for students. However, we have serious concerns about our ability to effectively implement this schedule at East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School next year. Some of these concerns are due to the nature of the schedule itself, others are related to the timeline we currently face. We offer this communication in a collaborative spirit and with a focus on what is best for our students. One significant concern regarding the current proposed schedule is loss of instructional time. One minute. In the proposed schedule, students would meet for 1,685 minutes less or 30, 55-minute less sessions. Given the rigors of curriculum, the demands of high-stakes testing, and the growing research questioning the efficacy of homework, we believe the loss of instructional time will negatively impact student learning. Educators were also apprehensive about the every-other-day schedule hindering our ability to create routines, build a cohesive classroom culture, and provide constant exposure to concepts, especially for our building's younger students. Aside from the concerns surrounding instructional timing, we were also worried the schedule may overload students without proper planning on our part. As we rightfully encourage our students to take increasingly vigorous course loads while also helping them maintain a healthy social-emotional balance, we worry students will become overwhelmed under the proposed schedule. Two minutes. We recognize that it is developmentally appropriate to ask students to adapt to new educational settings, but it is important that we have time to build...as a building to plan how we will scaffold any major schedule changes for our students. Without carefully planning, we risk leaving students with the shell of West Bridgewater's schedule without delivering the substance. Educators in the building are excited about some of the strengths of the schedule. For example, limiting transition times during the day would be effective. Longer blocks could be helpful in many classes, particularly science labs. Our concerns, however, are significant enough to warrant discussion of a pause in the process. Many teachers who visited West Bridgewater were impressed with their school, but it was not simply because of the way they organized minutes in their day. Their school benefited from full staffing, a long period of administrative continuity, and generally a more cohesive environment than we currently enjoy. It's the EBEA's position that our students would greatly benefit from a period of continuity in which we could build a stronger school culture to making any sweeping changes. This time could be utilized to study options for the future, determine what will best fit our school's needs, and plan for a strong implementation. Respectfully, Kurt Shippe, representing the EBEA.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome. Please come to the mic.
Good evening. Evening.
Are you still talking?
Evening. Jamil Siddiqui, 293 Washington Street, East Bridgewater, Massachusetts. I'm the longest-tenured faculty member here at the Junior High School, serving my role as mathematics teacher for the last 25 years, and I also happen to be the 2019 Massachusetts State Teacher of the Year. I'm here today speaking on behalf of my colleagues, many of which you see here with me tonight. On May 10, the East Bridgewater Education Association sent a letter that President Shippe just read to you requesting a meeting to discuss some of the potential difficulties that we saw moving to a new schedule during the 2019 and 2020 school year. The faculty was hoping to sit down with our administration and discuss the points that we felt would impact our students. I am disappointed to say, in the almost month that has passed since delivering our request, we have never been acknowledged. We have been completely ignored. This is disappointing. This is disappointing because I feel our input is not valued. This is disappointing because we feel disrespected. This is disappointing because we believe that rushing into a new schedule, a schedule that was suggested by administrator is no longer even here and one that does not have the supports in place at this time in order for it to be effective, is problematic at best and detrimental to our students at worst. We are here tonight to say again what we stated in our letter. We would like to open a meaningful discussion with administration about the concerns we have rushing into a new schedule without properly assessing the effects it will have on our students' educations. My colleagues and I are professionals. We are very good at what we do and we've been a source of pride for this district for a very long time. for a very long time. All of us want to see our students succeed. Our concerns should not be ignored and treated as if they're insignificant. As people who work hard for and directly with the children of East Bridgewater, our opinion should be valued and we should be given the respect that we deserve.
1:30.
We sincerely hope that you, as a school committee, feel the same way we do.
Thank you. So that was the last person on the list of people that wanted to speak during the public comments section. And now, we will move on to, we have the student here from Student Advisory Council. That's Delaney Lyons. And before she comes up to speak, I would like to thank people for coming and speaking this evening because it's important that people hear what you have to say.
Thank you.
Welcome, Delaney.
Hi.
Delaney.
So, this is actually the time slot for Senate, which is usually calendar updates. So recently, we, all clubs have reelected new presidents, treasurer, secretaries, vice presidents, et cetera, so we congratulate all those students, and I know a lot of them are willing to work hard. And I just want to thank not only our Senate advisor, Mr. Siddiqui, for working hard, and I know this year was wicked busy for him, but every day he was there with Senate, every Wednesday, but anytime we had a question, he was there. But not only him, but all the teacher advisors who were there advising other clubs after school with students, using their own time to keep student senate running so we can keep events going for students. There's not much other to say because it's mainly a calendar thing. It's the end of the year, so just congratulate everybody and thank everybody who worked hard this year. That's about all. Thank you.
Thank you, Delaney.
And I would just like to point out, I think Delaney's here and Riley Costello, I got your name right, and I'm not sure if there's anyone else here from the undergrad recital that was the other night. You guys, awesome playing the piano, Riley, and Delaney of a beautiful voice. And I don't know if I missed anybody. I saw Alex, you did a great job, too. I don't know if I, I hope I'm not missing anybody, but everybody did a great job. And next up, we have the superintendent's corner.
Thank you. So you asked for an update on the schedule, so I'm going to ask Mrs. Noyes, the Assistant Principal of the Junior Senior High School, Mrs. Clifford to come up, Mr. Phelan to come up as Special Ed Director, and Dr. Williams will run this conversation. The bell schedule, I think Mrs. Noyes has brought copies for everybody, or some copies to be passed out or to give out, but Mrs. Noyes is going to talk to it because as the high school, that's the Junior Senior High School, 7 through 12, it's their model that they have come up with, and she'll be discussing it. Mrs. Noyes, come on up.
It is now.
Hi.
Welcome.
Bring up a couple of these, we need to. Is it just one? One of these.
Welcome, Mrs. Noyes. Hello. Welcome, Mr. Phelan.
Good evening.
And Mrs. Noyes, I don't want to forget her.
Good evening, everybody. Going around, Mr. Leonard has handed out some of the blue and purple sheets that are presented schedule for this time. We did send 21 teachers to West Bridgewater. The schedule is also used at Plymouth North High School. We had to adapt it a little bit because our day is actually 15 minutes shorter than the other schools. So these blocks of time have been presented according to the time that we have here at the high school. This is a four-day schedule with a rotating block, which we listened to our teachers because the other schools had wanted, or they use a stagnant schedule, so they don't rotate at all. So one of the concerns from our staff was that they wanted the periods to rotate. Each student will have four blocks in one day. They will average about 77 minutes apiece. There is a 10-minute break in which both schools, in which that we talked to, felt that it was extremely important for them to have this, as well as the teachers with teaching such a long block. The 10-minute break basically would be a time for students to have a snack, to get some water, go to the bathroom, chat with their friends, just take a little breather before the next class began. Then during the B block would happen, then we would have what we call our power block. This is a 30-minute block that would take a variety of different uses. One would be similar to what we have right now as a directed learning time. This would be a time for students to go find their teachers that may need some makeup work or need a little extra help or question on a homework that they have been given from the previous night. If a student was out on one day and they come into school the next day, this is an opportunity for them to check in with their teachers and get all of the work that they missed from the day before. We will also plan on using this power block for assemblies, for scheduling, for guidance programs. This is also going to be used as advisory. The details are still going to obviously have to be worked out over the summer with this time. For our special ed students, this would be time for extra resource, extra pull-out time for them to get their services met that they may need as well. From there, we would go into our lunch block, still sticking to exactly the same lunches that we have, 20-minute lunches. Seniors would have first lunch because it would become a senior privilege that they could combine their power block with their lunch block to go off-campus and have a 50-minute lunch to, or go to the library, or we'd like to start using the courtyard a lot more, and that would give them an extra time to kind of have that freedom as young adults to make some good choices and do what they need to get done. And then the last period is a little bit longer because we scheduled in four minutes for afternoon announcements. The next day would be the following four classes, and then back to the rotating of the C, D, A, B. So students would be looking in different directions. Some of the benefits, Ms. Clifford is going to share with you. There is scheduled time in there. The passing time is four minutes between each class, three minutes in between each lunch. The 10-minute break, there is no passing time from that, so whatever the students have for Block A, they will keep their stuff there, go for their break when the bell rings, then they would pick up their stuff and proceed to the next class. Ms. Clifford will share what we feel are the benefits to the schedule.
Uh huh. So the reason that this schedule was chosen, I know personally, I've been at East Bridgewater Public Schools for seven years now. This is a discussion that's been ongoing for almost that whole time. It has gotten serious and then not serious and followed through and dropped about changing the schedule to accommodate a 7 through 12 schedule. So the first year I was here, that was a director from the superintendent. It was not explored to fruition. There was another, a couple of years later, there was several groups of us that went out to explore different 7 through 12 buildings. We discussed different schedule options. That did not come to pass. After the NEAS self-study and the report that we received back, the schedule that we currently have does not fully service 7 through 12 in any effective manner. What will come from this is that we will have increased electives for students that are very, sometimes very limited with their five majors in six classes. It will eliminate directed learnings and allow us to have the opportunity to do an AP academic lab for students that are taking more than two AP courses, as well as it will allow us to direct skill intervention blocks within the power block for special ed and general ed students that are struggling in specific areas. It allows us to have stronger access to cooperative, or students to have stronger access to cooperative and experiential learning opportunities, reduces lecture-style instruction. It's going to help us work towards the vision of the graduate, which was a handout that Ms. Noyes passed out, which is also part of the NEAS self-study and report that we will have to report on again in October, I believe. It increases opportunities for career pathway development for students and eventual internships, which we're hoping to do second semester. It will create stronger relationships between teachers and students because they have less classes to teach, they'll spend more time with students and be able to develop stronger relationships. Students will benefit from a multitude of instructional strategies to increase learning and demonstrate knowledge. There'll be less movement in the hallways, which the other schools reported decreased disciplinary issues, and students have expressed a desire to have support opportunities on social-emotional topics, different groups that students have started around the building. They would have this opportunity to run those groups during the power block.
One of the, one of the great things, one of the, a couple of the programs that they ran for power block was like a girls' walk-in top group, a quick, healthy snack class. So these were during the power blocks, sometimes the different creativity that the other schools had used, working on stress management, meditation, mindfulness, all these topics that are so need, you know, widely used today that our school really needs to move forward on. So the power block is definitely something that can provide a lot of opportunities for a lot of different things for students.
I mean, I just think that, looking at the schedule the way it is and the power block, it allows an opportunity to give students who have disabilities a chance to get in and get the resources that they need, get those interventions that they need, work with them and support them. It really is beneficial to them, as well as having some longer periods or longer blocks allow them, allow us as educators to get out and use the UDLs that the whole district's been working on, develop that, get that across out there, and really support all learners.
I know, just recently interviewing some candidates for our science position, most of the candidates are now teaching in block scheduling, so it is extremely popular with a lot of schools around us. And I know it's a fast, quick change for some people, but from what I've heard, the schedule has been talked about throughout the years. And so I think it's extremely beneficial for our students, especially trying to move towards career pathways and having internships. This gives a student the ability to have 81 minutes at the end of the day to go to the hospital, work as a candy striper there, mechanics, carpentry, whatever they choose for their career that they may want to go into for school or something like that. So I think it's very beneficial there as well.
Can I ask just a quick question about that? Would they miss these classes?
They would only, it would depend on their internship.
So in other words, if you're going on it, like, I know, I don't know how to make it work, but, like, I assume it wouldn't be an everyday internship because you couldn't miss four classes a week, right? So how would that work?
So the game plan would be to, it would be a semester thing, so it would be like the last semester of the school year for seniors.
Oh, so this is only for seniors? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So this internship would be for seniors, if I didn't clarify, sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
And then we would schedule it in for the second half of the year if they were interested in doing that internship, and that block would be their internship block.
So they wouldn't miss a class because it would be scheduled that way?
Correct.
Oh, wait a minute, but the blocks rotate.
But it's an internship, so it could just be one block per cycle. So just one day they would leave, and it's at the end.
One day internship.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
As a pilot, we have to start somewhere.
Can I ask a couple of questions about power block? Because I would suspect that when that number is referenced of 1,685 minutes less per year of instruction, the bulk of that, what they're referencing comes from the power block time. And working in a school that has power block, I think very highly of it, but I'm curious about your plans for it at this school. So you've talked about support for AP kids, you've talked about support for kids that have IEPs. More than half of our kids do not have IEPs or take AP classes. So what would be the plan for those kids during these power block classes?
So it would be the same thing. They would have similar directed learning, what they have right now. We really would like them to go out to whatever subject that they are struggling in and go see that teacher for whatever makeup work that they could get done, or if they're having an issue with a certain lesson that was taught the day before, they would go and talk with that teacher. So they would all be scheduled as a homeroom.
So they can do what they want.
So they have a place to report to during that period?
They are scheduled as a homeroom there, yes.
So I'm Tim McLaughlin, a mid-B student who, you know, gets pretty good grades but nothing spectacular, and I'm caught up in most of my work and there's nothing outstanding. What am I doing on that block?
So the teacher would hopefully be instructing some reading or, you know, just personal reading, taking notes for future classes, like getting, getting ahead of the game.
And the teacher that's in that class at the time, who may be seeing other kids who are struggling during their other periods.
Yep.
Is focusing on those kids, but not necessarily the 12 or 13 kids that may be left behind in their class. So I guess, so your teacher's going to have 25 kids in their class.
Mm-hmm.
But they're focusing on 10 kids that need intervention at the minute, and there's a group of kids that are...
The other students should be doing their homework.
Self-directed.
Yes, self-directed.
But what if they don't have homework?
Well, then hopefully they have a book or something else that they can be doing.
I only ask because you're referencing lower discipline by the less transitions, which I agree with, but I see a potential, and I, again, I've seen other schools how they handle this, but I want to know what your plans are. I see a potential for huge discipline issues by kids that are not directed or...
What happens in West Bridgewater?
They are, well, in my school, they're assigned to homerooms and they are with those homerooms unless a teacher agrees to take them and there's a plan for those kids. It's something they've done for 15 years where it works.
Yep.
But I don't know how it worked when it was rolled out, and I don't know how they came to this current version.
So I think what Ms. Noyes said is that would be fully developed over the summer, but our tentative plans at this point would be to have teacher permission to leave that homeroom.
Like a pass, they would have...
That would also be an opportunity for guidance to do presentations on social-emotional. So if a teacher had a full day that they anticipated a bunch of students coming in, they could easily call guidance and we could go in and work with the other half of the students to create direction or a lesson.
But we only have four guidance couples.
And I have interns and myself in this.
For those higher-achieving students who are on the younger end, not in AP classes, very diligent, to your point, caught up with their work, having this power block, speaking somewhat from experience, there would be great opportunity for much boredom for a child who may already be a little bored in school. How is that going to be addressed? Because you're, like Tim said, you're addressing AP, you're addressing the kids who need extra help, but you do still have a good amount of kids who are strong performers, but I guess are on a little bit different part of this. And to know that a kid perhaps is sitting in this power block, reading every day, you know, I'm sure they'll have homework, but some kids like to do their homework at home or what have you. I just, I would like to understand a little more thought around that because I'm sure the responsibility shouldn't fall on the teachers all the time to make sure these kids, you know, are doing reading or what have you.
Can I, so right now, within the schedule, we have directed learnings. So like a study hall, students are in a room, they could all be working on something totally different. With the plot, with this schedule, the power block is going on at the same time for everyone across the building. So it does allow for opportunities for teachers to have an interest in conducting an enrichment group or in conducting a student support group around a particular topic. So with this type of schedule, it allows us to create those opportunities knowing that we have all staff and all students available, and it's not a matter of kids hit or miss as to whether the teacher they need to be with is available or not. So this consistent power block across the time of day, now we can customize what the students are doing as opposed to a directed learning right now where you may need extra support or you need to go beyond what you're learning in a classroom, and you can access that teacher, or that teacher can pull a group of students. I mean, working collaboratively across the building gives the opportunity that we can sort students into groups based on what they need on any particular day, and it doesn't have to be every single Monday it's this. And it doesn't have to be every single Monday it's this, every single Tuesday, it has the flexibility to be altered, given activities and events that are going on at any point in the year.
Okay, so to that point, understanding that it's a consistent power block and it's a collaborative, and there'll be opportunity for all students, depending on where they fall or what their needs are, what's planned, I'm just thinking in my head, I'm such a planner. How, how is this actually going to be planned out? You said it can change, right, depending on the day or the needs or the events. I'm just thinking in my mind, you have all these kids, the teachers all available, how logistically can that be managed, perhaps, if it's done on a Monday? It's kind of like a moving target, right?
Just real quick, how many kids are we talking about? If we're talking about planning and logistics, how many kids are we talking about?
Well, the whole school would have power block at the same time. So, I mean, it can roll out as slowly or as quickly as we want it to. So every student is assigned somewhere initially. So as things are developed, then it could be an opportunity for students to, oh, I'm going to, I would like to go here for that block, as opposed, and I know with West Bridgewater, they're still reporting to that teacher they're assigned to, to then let them know where they want to spend that time.
Take attendance, it's a pass system, there's a whole setup for it. I guess my only point in bringing it up is, I actually support the power block, I think it's a great idea, I think intervention blocks are, you know, really what moves schools forward. I just want to make sure, that's where I've kind of seen these things fall apart before, is that you spend so much time thinking about the kids in AP or the kids that need, you know, IEP support, and you leave out the 60% in the middle, and that's where it crumbles, is that those kids, there's not a plan and there's not a setup for them. And that, I want to make sure there's thought, a lot of thought that goes into that.
Yeah, and I think, moving forward, you know, one of the things that we had thought about was the getting together, creating a master schedule before school starts next year, with the ideas and dates of when we would have assemblies, when we would have the power block that the students would be using as their study time. It is going to take a lot of work, and we are going to have growing pains, we are going to, you know, it's going to be a time of learning for the first term or so, just as West Bridgewater, just as any school, when you unroll a new schedule out, there are going to be things that may work for other schools that don't work for us, or vice versa. And we have to, you know, adjust that as we go along.
Can I ask, well, I have multiple questions, but 7th and 8th graders currently have six courses, including specials. So on the seven block, existing seven block schedule, and let me first preface this by this, is that theoretically, I think the schedule is awesome. I'm more concerned that we're implementing it too fast, and here's one of the reasons. So we are adding an eighth block to 7th and 8th grade students, but we're not adding any electives, we're not adding any teachers, or anything to that. So in effect, they end up in two enrichments, which I don't totally understand enrichment, because my daughter doesn't have one this year. But I see the potential for a lot of unengaged, bored 7th and 8th graders, if they're having two enrichments. I know they're not two on the same day, but two enrichments in their eighth block, unless, and again, unless we have like really structured enrichments, and how do we get all of that from June to September when teachers aren't even in the building?
I think for 7th and 8th grade, that are already running an enrichment program. The additional enrichment for 7th grade is going to be a skills academy, so they're going to be focusing, focusing on executive functioning skills by term. So the students will rotate, and they'll go through organization and prioritization and all the different things that I've spoken to you every time I come in to my presentation. That's a real need for social emotional.
A huge need.
So that's what they are going, that's what their plan is.
And who will be teaching that?
The 7th grade teachers. And guidance will be going in and co-teaching with them.
But are they trained to do that?
I'm sorry, just real quick, are we, are we talking about a situation where we have, where we think that there is no boredom block, if you want to call it that, and now we're going to create a boredom block?
That's posh, pot of mine.
So it's not happening, but it's not, you don't think that it is happening and we're going to create that?
No, I'm saying it probably is already happening with one, and now we're adding two.
We're going to add two.
I don't believe that it's happening.
Is that, do you think that's-
I don't mean in totality, but you know-
Do you think that's going to be the outcome? I'm sorry, I'm looking at the professionals, do we think that's going to happen?
No.
I think that the 7th grade teachers have put a lot of thought into their additional class, I think that they know the students very well, and I think that they're addressing them.
So they already know they have the additional class?
Yes. The 7th grade teachers are the ones that developed it.
I mean, I, again, I think the idea of the schedule is phenomenal.
Say that they don't know it?
I just, how long have other districts, if anybody knows, from the time of drawing a block to implementation, how long has the plan been? And I mean, honestly, my biggest concern is, we're going to get into it and realize we don't have enough money to support it, so.
Well, the year has to start with every student being scheduled, so we wouldn't have students not scheduled within the building.
No, no, I know they'd be scheduled, but-
You don't change your master schedule mid-year, like you-
Right.
Right, I'm not implying that, I'm saying, why, why September 19 instead of September 20, to make sure we do it right and get it right? And I don't know the answer to the question I'm asking.
Well, what's the benefit? Tell me what's the benefit is.
So if I can interject?
Okay, well, of course, make sure we get it right, but tell me how we're going to get it right.
Can I let Dr. Williams speak for a minute?
Sorry. So as far as, from a central office perspective, it's not our role to develop a schedule. What our responsibility is to make sure that the district initiatives can be best implemented through the schedules that are developed within each building. Two major initiatives that we've been working on for the past couple of years that I've shared with you numerous amount of time is universal design for learning. We've invested quite a bit of money in having three teams of teachers go to multiple trainings over the course of the year, so that they can learn what is universal design for learning. And basically, it's to prevent barriers from students being able to access education. It's really looking at how to instruct students so that they're engaged, and that they can represent what they know in the modes that fit them best. So have they have, they have choices in how they are learning information, and they have choices in how they're representing what they've learned. And for those that are on the teams that are here tonight, we spoke to Dr. Katie Novak, who is the guru, and she said to us, you cannot effectively run universal design for learning without the blocks. You need those longer blocks in order to be able to effectively implement the universal design for learning strategies. So for me, that was one thing. We're investing our time, we're investing our money, it's not going away, we've got new teams that are going to start the trainings next year. So for, for us to wait another year, and to Mr. McLaughlin's point, we wouldn't implement or change in the middle of the year. That, to me, is a year lost of learning, or an opportunity for students to access their education and to break down the barriers. I'm a parent with three students that are going to be in this building next year. For me, it's a year lost for them. One less year of them being able to access the education and show what they know and express what they've learned in the mode that works best for them. So yes, we could wait, but we have to think about the students that are losing out on that opportunity to do that. The other big piece for me that we've talked about is the MAP assessment. We've spent the last two years with data teams in all three buildings, and we just met Tuesday to look at the data, and the difference in the growth at the elementary school was profound. And to me, the biggest driving factor was having intervention. Deliberately being able to look at the data, analyze the data, and provide the support to students explicitly in the skills that they're deficit. And how do they do that? They do it during intervention blocks. The high school does not have that ability right now. We talked a little bit earlier in the year about having late starts so that they could have more time to look at the data. I'll be back to you with that next year. We definitely want to implement that for the, the high school, to have time to sit, to look at the data, because we need to use the data to make decisions. I know in speaking with one of the high school teachers yesterday, they had MCAS prep that was specifically looking at how students performed the year before, and helping to support them in the areas of deficits so that they'd perform better the following year. This type of a schedule would allow for us to do that. And they could keep changing. Every six to eight weeks, there could be a different intervention group focused on a different set of skills. And in my mind, if we can do that for those students that need intervention, we can certainly create these opportunities for students who need enrichment, that there isn't always an ability and opportunity to do in a typical class. So for me, those were two huge pieces, the universal design for learning and the opportunity to use the data to perform intervention for those students explicitly.
And I know that we had Team One, and I know we're going to talk about it later in the high school principal interviews, but is there any concern not, that a principal is walking into a change, that they've had no say or say in, and/or are they, I assume we're operating in full disclosure? Because we don't have a principal, so I, that, I mean, that's my other concern, we don't have a principal in place, and while I do think this is an excellent schedule, if the principal is responsible for the schedule and not the administration, are we implementing a change for a principal that isn't even here?
So even if we kept the schedule, that might be a change for somebody coming in. We don't know what schedule they're used to, so if we kept the schedule we have for an administrator, it would be new to them. Mr. McLaughlin was part of the interviews, that's later in the agenda, but with every candidate we interviewed, not one of them asked what the schedule was. So I think from an administrative's perspective, that's not a priority.
And just a quick point, too, that any principal that we hire is going to walk into a schedule, whether it's this schedule or another schedule.
Right, but we're talking about a schedule change.
No, we're not, we're just saying that whatever schedule it is, a principal is going to walk in and say, we're going to say this, it's a schedule. So it's, whatever schedule we decide-
But we're in mid-change and you're asking a principal to implement something that they had no involvement in. That's my point.
And they would know about that before-
Well, that's what I'm asking.
As they're walking in the door, there won't be a secret.
So Superintendent Legault, if I, if I could, so it seems, there's basically two discussions going on here right now. One is, is it a good schedule or not? And the other is, how it was communicated and come about. From my own perspective, I, I do like this schedule a lot. I mean, I work in a district that uses this schedule, we're a high achieving district, there's a lot to like about it. I understand the frustration and concern on behalf of the teachers. Having been a teacher that went through master schedule changes, and having designed master schedule changes myself, I've never worked or heard of a school that did a master schedule change and said, fantastic. There's, it's natural for them to be frustrated about it. I do want to address the, the communication and collaboration piece a little bit, and I'm wondering if the appropriate venue to do that, and I know we had, I believe we had a parent night earlier in the spring about the schedule, correct? Poorly attended, if I remember? We had some kind of an event, no?
Not above schedule.
Am I misremembering that? I apologize.
Did we decide the schedule?
Perhaps, I apologize, I'm misremembering that. Perhaps we could, though. So I'm wondering if at this time, having an open forum for parents in the community to come together-
I'm a parent and I am in no way qualified to determine what a good schedule is.
Not, not to speak to it, to ask questions of the exist, of the current administration and to understand better what it is we're trying to achieve here, because-
Sure.
But there's many in the community that aren't just you. I understand that, but I fielded, you know, we've fielded calls from people that weren't able to make it here tonight, and-
For the record, I'm also not qualified to determine, like, fire department procedures or-
Nope, and don't misunderstand what I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not asking, I'm not asking that we-
You're missing his point.
I'm not asking that we make changes to the schedule. I'm, I'm advocating for an event where Dr. Legault and Ms. Noys can get up in front of the town, similar to what we're doing now, but not in the school committee forum, and have a conversation about the schedule and what it means for our kids, and what the timeline is, and what's realistic. I don't know that waiting a year is a good idea.
I agree.
I understand that September is quick, there's no middle ground between those two, and I think there's always a reason to wait another year. So all those things being said, I mean, this is ultimately the decision of the superintendent and the administration on the schedule they're going to move forward with. So that being said, I think, you know, communication with the town should be the, of the utmost concern right now.
And, and the staff?
Correct. I include the staff as part of the town.
Sure.
Yes, I mean, I think it's, it's definitely, I'm open to having an open forum or talking to parents the best that we can with the information that we have. Do I feel that the schedule and the details of it still need to be figured out? Absolutely. Running on one person being in the offices, I have not been able to delve into the details that we needed to do that, because there are many other things that also take precedence in the school, the safety of our children being number one. So there is still a lot of work to be done with this schedule. Do I feel like for the rigor and for in-depth learning, that this is the way to go? I do truly believe that, and I think it has a lot of potential to offer our students a college-like feel, having in college, for those that are heading that way, in college, we take classes every other day, a Monday, Tuesday, or, I mean, a Monday, Wednesday, or a Tuesday, Thursday class. This is exactly what the schedule starts to train them for, moving towards the college track, if that's what they choose. If they don't choose the college track, it gives them time to learn the lesson, have the day in between, to digest the material, get the help that they want, and then move forward to the next day in that lesson as well. So I am, I am willing to talk with whoever would like to talk with me about that, with Ms. Clifford and Superintendent Legault, Dr. Williams, if they're interested, but yes, I will, I'm open to talk to whoever would like to speak.
And I just wanted one quick point to you, Dr. Williams, and that's the first time I've called you doctor. The, the power block, when you just were re-clarifying the use of MAPS testing, that's encouraging for me to hear, because I see this, this data coming home all the time, and I'm always wondering, where's the opportunity for the teachers to actually use this in a collaborative format to plan for kids who are in all different areas of whatever the subject matter is? So that, that was helpful clarification, and I hope it helped other parents understand that it's not necessarily just going to be, you know, sitting, reading, because that's somewhat what I kind of had.
Right.
Depending on where your kid is academically.
Right, because we do, the MAPS testing will even show that we do have students who are high performing, yet their growth is not there. So, you know, to, to speak to those students who may not need intervention to mediate deficits, it's also for those students who are strong academic students, but yet we're not seeing the growth.
I, I think in some ways, Tara, you can, or at least supported why I think there's some benefit to waiting, because you are only one right now, and we're going into summer break, and we, we have even less. Again, I think the schedule is great, but I think, I know for my own student, I'm not going to speak for other parents, but I know for mine, there's a lot of anxiety around it, not knowing what next year is going to bring. So I, again, I, I think the schedule is great, I think implementing it well and making sure we have everything we need to implement it well, including funding.
Which that is definitely concern of our staff. You know, with longer blocks, they need more thing, and we want to offer electives, we want to offer longer labs in science, foreign language lab, all those things are going to take funding. And we, as an administrative team, would definitely have to work on that and look at those things that, you know, if we are asking our staff to do this, that we support the extras that they need.
But there's no funding in our budget, right?
As a team, you think that financially, academically, student achievement wise, that this is the right way to go? Basically, I'm looking to ask you, do you have a recommendation? You think this is the, you think that this is the way to go?
Yes, I do.
Is that true?
Yes.
Is that-
Do you think the timing is the way to go? I don't think anything, anybody would disagree on the value of the schedule, I think it's a phenomenal schedule.
I think, do we rip off the Band-Aid, go into it, fix it so that we make it work? Whether we do it this year, or whether we do it next year, we're going to stumble, we're going to have our issues, we're, you know, we're, that's going to set us back another year, kind of like what Dr. Williams said.
And we will be here to point all of those out for you.
Thanks. But I also understand the concern, and it, I think it will work as far, you know, we have to work together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to say thank you to Ms. Noys and Mr. Phelan and Mrs. Clifford for that in-depth explanation.
Well done.
For coming, you know, it's a hot seat.
Thank you.
Thank you to Dr. Williams and Superintendent Legault for explaining, and we look forward to future public discussions. And at this time, we're going to move forward to the next item on the agenda.
So you have the NEAS update in front of you. We just received this-
We just received this on June 4th, which was Monday, they sent me correspondence. The committee was pleased to learn of the following development of the vision of the graduate, the initial system to measure and report student progress in achieving the vision of the graduate, the efforts to examine how the school is effectively supporting the needs of staff and students through the district's PD Academy, the increased funding for novels for the English Department, equipment for the Science Department, resources for the library, supplies for the woodshop, and technology education programs, new uniforms for the marching band, and math department supplies and activities. In addition to responding to the 11 recommendations highlighted in the committee's July 23rd to 18 notification letter, the school's two-year progress report due October 1st, 2020, should provide detailed information on action taken to address the additional highlighted recommendations. These additional recommendations are, provide an update on the status of implementation of the process to assess the vision of the graduate, develop a plan to ensure opportunities for all students to practice and achieve the vision of the graduate, provide an update of the community and district's governing body, funding for staffing, necessary supplies and materials and technology, repairs and replacement. Of course, this was done by the, by the teachers, faculty, staff, and former principal, and I did speak to Kathleen, Dr. Kathleen Montagnogno, the other day, actually, I spoke to her first, I had to leave for a meeting, Dr. Williams spoke to her secondly, told her we are in the process of hiring a new high school, junior, senior high school principal. At that time, the junior high school principal would meet with the NEAS accreditation, are their liaison, to sit down and talk to them about the visit, the next steps into moving forward. This is what I have, this is the update.
I also spoke with Kathleen, myself, the other day to introduce myself and kinda went over a few things, so I will be looking at the reports and moving forward, trying to get that done with hopefully some support of the staff that was already on the NEAS committee to make that happen for October 10.
Liz, can we get a copy of what we sent to them to trigger this letter?
I've asked for a copy from her office.
Can you just?
Yep, sure. The junior, senior high school principal search update, as you know, I am removed from the process in the first round of interviews, the second, and then it, the, any interviews done by the, by the administration team is put to my office for recommendation to appointment to you. The principal search committee was started by Dr. Williams, so I'm gonna, again, hand it over to Dr. Williams, let you know the timeline that's coming up, and we are gonna, we are looking at a different type of format coming up over the next couple of weeks, or next week, that we spoke a little bit about, and, but Dr. Williams can give you an update of where they are at this time.
Great, thank you. So we had 27 candidates apply for the position of junior, senior high school principal. Those applications were screened down to 12 based on the qualifications needed for the high school principal position. Of the 12, that was pared down to eight based on information within the resume that we felt did not qualify them as a valuable candidate. We had eight candidates that we contacted for interviews, and of the eight, seven had returned calls to come in. Unfortunately, the day of the first interviews, one bowed out, so we had a total of six candidates that came forward for our two days of interviewing. Each interview was about 45 minutes. We had a great panel of interview team members, and if you indulge me, I would like to mention them by name, just because I appreciate the commitment that they've made. I put the message out to all staff at the junior, senior high school, as well as, I reached out to a member of the school committee who is a parent of future students here, and also serves as a principal in his other life, as well as student representation and parent representation. So representing 7th and 8th grade, we had Mrs. Gendias. Representing grades nine through 12, we had Mrs. Julia Sheen and Ms. Cassie Wadden. Representing special services, we had our school psychologist, Tessa Ryan. Representing the arts, we had Mr. Mark Ferrioli. As a parent representative on the school council, we had Mrs. Mary Beth Toomey. The two students that we had were rising seniors, Sadie Nicar and Abby McCarthy. Our school committee representative was Mr. McLaughlin, and administrative assistant, Jen Furia. And then myself and Patrick Leonard, our athletic director. So we all served on the committee, lots of great questions were given to the candidates. We had really high-qualified candidates, but we did make recommendations upon deliberation, and we have three candidates that we are moving forward to the final round of interviews. Those will be held next Tuesday. It will be a different panel, made up of members of the leadership team within the district, Superintendent Legault, Business Administrator, Mr. Shea, Special Education Director, Mr. Fallon, Director of Guidance, Mrs. Clifford, as well as key people here within the building, Mr. Doug Ortenzi, Head Custodian, Mrs. Diane Ashy, Administrative Assistant to the Principal. Absolutely, there'll be school committee representation as well, and they will conduct final rounds of interviews. From there, there will also be reference checks done to make sure that the candidate that we feel we wanna put forward and offer a contract to also has quality recommendations from their current and former employees. So I'm hoping, within the next two weeks, we'll be ready for contract negotiation with a new principal for the junior, senior high school.
We could potentially know by June 20th, by our next school committee meeting, maybe, or no?
Ideally, that would be wonderful.
Gina, what is the typical notice requirement of a principal? In other words, say you off it by, on June 20th, you had a contract ready to go and it was off it, what is the earliest they could start?
July 1.
In terms of typical?
So most contracts, yeah, most contracts would run through June 30th, with July 1 start for a new principal.
Do they have a notice requirement if their contract ran past June 30th?
Everybody's contract is.
I know, I just didn't know if there was like a typical.
So I don't know, but.
You know what I'm trying to say, Liz?
Yeah, I would just add that most of the time.
We're all the same boat.
Especially in the administration world, usually there's an agreement, superintendent calls another superintendent, says we'd like to have he or she come in a little bit earlier, or they would say, we need to hold them for a couple of weeks, can we do something different? Usually, we can work that out. I have not seen any names, I don't know where any candidate is coming from, I do know that I would like a different type of format. I did speak to Dr. Williams about that format today, of having people in the audience, possibly watching the interview take place. That being said, there needs to be things to be looked at in that, and I would like people to be involved in something like that, so they can see the principals. However, again, when a principal gets into the final round, that's when their names will be released. So we, we're giving them time, Dr. Williams has made some calls today, I don't know who those people are, haven't, I don't, I don't get those names until way at the end. Once those names, once Dr. Williams has talked to the candidates, then she will say we'll be releasing the names. Once those names are released, then they become public. Once we go public, then usually we will say these candidates will be, you know, I don't know, 5 to, 5 to 5:45, 6 to 6:45, 7 to 7:45.
It would be an open forum.
Right, but there's gotta be, there's, it's, there's rules.
Oh, no, no, I know, but I mean.
Protocols and things like that, and, you know, I want, I want a good principal, we certainly want someone to get involved here in East Bridgewater, we want someone to stay here, and we certainly want people involved from the community.
Someone to, to your interview.
Yep.
In effect, it's public, but.
Yep, right, and you're in the forum.
The committee is the people, the hiring committee are the people who.
So when we spoke today, Dr. Williams was just going through to get sort of acceptance to coming back for a second round interview. That's, I don't know how many he heard from, but, or if you haven't checked your messages yet, or.
Three rounds typical in, in the educational hiring world?
Yeah, sometimes you have more, sometimes you have less. Depends on how quickly this goes, and depends on how quickly someone wants to get in here. There are some people that wanna get right in, there's some people that will say, I need to walk my, my school out, and give them an opportunity to say goodbye. Most people that are going for a junior, senior high school principalship, elementary principalship, or middle school principalship, they, they know that they're going to go out and interview, and they've usually talked to somebody, either to their colleague or to the central office, and said, I'm going to go out.
No, I'm just saying, is, is like three, come in for interviews common? Is it three?
She said, yeah.
Yep, yeah.
And I think, too, that, you know, given the process that Dr. Williams outlined, no one's gonna be able to say that we weren't transparent, no one's gonna be able to say we didn't involve teachers.
Oh, I wasn't implying that, I was just curious.
We're, we're putting this information out there, everyone can participate, like, I'm looking around this room right now, and I see so many people here. Keep coming back, we have meetings twice a month, everybody should come back. Not just for, you know, hot topics, come back.
Outstanding graduation.
We don't always have cupcakes, though.
No, those are special.
That's only retirement night.
Is it an open forum, you can communicate back and forth?
No.
The public comment section is always there.
We have that at the beginning.
Okay, all right. We have to know when those discussions take place, with the community, and people care about what's going on.
Yeah.
Sure.
And you can reach out to us individually.
We all have emails.
I don't, we're all phone.
You have a very good opinion that man in the green are about as far as.
What did I say?
As far as speaking with the parents. Being able to speak to the parents, being able to, I think we need to come together as a community, there's a lot of people that may have great ideas, so, and you don't necess-
Talk to the man in the green, he's great.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate your.
And having a meeting on that, yes.
So the graduation ceremony was last Sunday, it was wonderful, beautiful weather, I can't say enough about Doug Ortenzi, John Roback, the, the crew that cleaned up and got us ready for that, and set up and, and took everything down, they were terrific. The, the kids were outstanding, there was 130 graduates this year, outstanding, going all over the place, some going right out to the workforce, some going to college, whether two-year, four-year, technical school, really nice bunch of kids, it was just a great day for everybody, and those are the days that you look for. We have a 6th grade stepping up ceremony coming up, kindergarten went two weeks ago, Mrs. Byrne, they're still in school, but they had their, we had their concert.
Patriotic concert.
We had their patriotic concert. So there's a lot of things going on, a lot of field trips going on this last couple of weeks. Graduation is one big day for the junior, or the high school graduate, but we also have a lot of other things going on, of stepping up ceremonies, lots of things at the Mitchell and the Central School. Reminder, on Monday night.
Could you give us a 30-second update on your meteorologist?
Mr. Cog.
I thought was hilarious and awesome.
He, he's gonna do great things, and I hope to see him on, I'm an advocate of Channel 10, but some people like Channel 12, but he's great, and I hope to see him again, and I'll ask, I'll ask him how the next two weeks are gonna look outside. I'm just gonna keep this going.
All right.
And the only reason I.
Put that up on the website if he gives you permission, because I think it would be cool.
Yeah, oh, you haven't, it is fun.
No, I thought.
Oh, it was on his YouTube.
People have.
But we do have the, we do have committees here tonight that wanna present. The town meeting is on June 10th, on Monday night, starting at 7:00 PM. Our certified budget, I hope, I, we're, I spoke to Mr. Longo, the interim town manager, John and I are confident that that's gonna go through, we're confident that we're gonna continue to get more, more funds for the schools, we do believe that the House, Senate, House of Means, and the legislation is gonna continue to move the money. I was up there last week today, Dr. Williams and I were at a meeting this afternoon, and I was at one earlier, and then one at 9 o'clock this morning, I met Dr. Williams, we left here at about 11:15 this morning. This is all that the talk is right now, is about getting that allocation from moving us in Chapter 70 and get our funding up. Right now, we hope for an upswing of about $250,000. We did hear from a couple of our colleagues that were on the Hill yesterday, that said they're looking at a little bit more, that, that the governor is pushing for more money. So I, keep your fingers crossed, we want more money, we wanna get some more, we wanna get more FTS, we wanna get more programs for our kids, we wanna do the right thing in the community and for the kids in the school district.
Who do I call, which of my state representatives, like, all of them?
All of them.
Mr. Brady Dubois.
The school committee, the school committee has an opportunity.
We went and talked to them, they in the Hill.
Exactly.
And I've been writing letters.
And everybody.
I'm advocating as much as I can, and I do believe we will get enough uptick.
And we wanna say that there will be free childcare.
There will be free childcare, June 10th, at the town meeting. Oh, wait, and what?
Beginning at 7:00.
Yeah, beginning at 7:00.
What's drop off the childcare, 6:45?
6:45.
So can we get 6:45, Dr.?
Sure, I thought regular town meeting was at 7:30, but I'll let Mrs. Veras know.
I've got 7:00, I've got 7:00.
Drop off time is 6:45.
Okay.
6:45.
I've dropped my kids off there, and they had a blast.
Letter, get a letter of resignation from Danielle Randall, Instructional Support Assistant from Central School, effective June 30th, 2019. Hate to lose anybody over there, but we wish her the best of, I know.
She's got a great opportunity.
Yep, she's got a great opportunity, I know, you're excited for her, and I wish her the best of luck.
Danielle, how's your family?
No, I, I think it's the closing of the year, I appreciate everybody coming, there is a chance, I hope, that we can sit and talk and always continue our conversation and collaborative efforts. We look, we look forward to moving this, moving East Bridgewater forward, we're a pre-K through 12 district. One of the things that we do in Central Office, both of us, or all of us, is we are a PK through 12 district. So my eyes are not just on, focused on one, it's on all, so we've got, you know, I wanna thank Mr. Gentile for his works this year, Mr. Dupre, always breath of fresh air, a smile always in the hallway, appreciate all you do down there at the Mitchell School, great evaluator, always on time, always, always pushing to make us better. Thank you. Jemmy Partland, great job this year with all that you do, helping us with the data, the map, on the, on the curriculum facilitator side, we really appreciate all you do. Deb Nichols, emotional year for yourself, you've got a daughter who graduated last week, I think, on Saturday. I saw you on Monday, and you were, your hands were still a little shaky, and you're still a little emotional. We went through it with you, I feel, because I've known you for four years now, and I watched her from a freshman, I watched you going all over the place, I watched you doing your own cartwheels to show us how good she was as a cheerleader, and congratulations to you, you really did a nice job this year, you really upped your game, and you're tremendous leader at Central School. Kate, as always, I know we've, we laugh a lot, Kate and I do, I don't know any other way to say it, Kate, this year has been great, your kindness, your mantra, and your continued, continued relentlessness on mindfulness for all children and for your staff. Every morning going in, regardless at what time, listening to you do that mantra has been great for me, and I know that you and I, Kate has come to my administrative, our administrative meetings, and we've had her do mindfulness training with us. It has been a pleasure to go through that, I even went to, I go to their faculty meetings, and I have got to go in and watch mindfulness training there. So I wanna thank the principals for all that they do. Tara Noiz, she's, she should still be, Tara, Tara's done a tremendous job, assistant principal, walking us out of the year here, it's not easy being alone, we wish her the best of luck through the interview process, and we wish her the best of luck with us here, she's done a great job. But this closes it out when we see our administrators this, at this school committee meeting, so I wanna thank you guys, you did a great job for us, I don't know if you wanna add anything, but I gotta thank Dr. Williams.
Last but not.
Last but not least, John. Yep, John. John has been, John always, always really tries to work hard for the kids, and trying to get us more support, trying to allocate more funds towards the students, and always finding ways to get us more for the buck, and we're gonna continue to try to do that. Dr. Williams, again.
You're welcome.
I guess that sums it up. No, just, you, you can't do this alone, true partner in the sense of it, and we get things done, and we'll get them done again. So thank you for, thanks for the administrative team, thanks for this evening, and we've got Karen Clifford, and for social, emotional, I don't know who's with you, but you are welcome, thank you.
Yes, well, next up, are we, are we going out of order?
No, all of our staff, I'm just talking about the administrators.
No, I know.
Because we're not, we'll have time to speak to the, to the faculty.
But we're still meeting again, right?
We have June 20. Next up, we have Strategic Plan Number One, Curriculum and Instruction, we have.
Sorry, that was my fault.
Ted Dupre.
Turn the page.
Please come up.
Are they up here?
Welcome to have a meeting with us this evening.
Hi, everyone, thanks for having us. We are here to kind of give you an end-of-year summary to our Strategic Plan update, so we're going to give you a brief overview of what we accomplished this year as a team, and where we'd like to go moving forward. So we're going to. So, we're going to start with Mrs. McPartland, who's going to give a little overview of our MAP data as we had talked about, as well as looking at our curriculum review cycle, and then I'll be talking about our writing accomplishments as well as our...
All right. Great. Thank you. Just this week, our district data and instruction team met. We had created a pretty lo... It's okay. We had created a pretty lofty goal of looking at our student growth rather than looking at our, just the achievement levels of our students. So, in doing so, our data is there and read. That num... Those numbers represent the percentage of our students that met or exceeded their projected growth in MAP, and projected growth is personal to every single student. So, at the Central School, the goal was for 70% of students data to ELA in math classes. At Mitchell School, they had a different goal for math and ELA, 70% of students for math. The scores are down there. I do have printouts for you that you can take with you later on. On the next page, we also have our... The continuation of Mitchell School for ELA, and then also at the high school. So, that represent... Those numbers represent, like I said, the growth of our students individually. Average growth for across an entire cohort is around 50 to 55%. So, as a district, we went above and beyond and created goals that were 55 or 60 or 70% because we wanted to be better than the average. Okay? So, those being respectable numbers, I do want to also bring up this achievement table right here, where achievement is what we most often look at. We look at MCAS scores. We look at how do our students compare to other students in the same grade level. So, across the nation, those numbers right there represent the achievement of our students. So, for example, if you look at grade one, our reading scores are in the 97th percentile according to MAP, and in math, they're in the 96th percentile. All of these numbers, if you go all the way across, we have some pretty amazing data right there. So, we are doing wonderful things. The educators in this district are doing amazing things. They're pushing our students. We see we can hold our own with other students of the same age and the same grade level. And on the earlier slides, we were talking about growth. So, we're also trying to push that envelope with, yes, our student might be a fifth grader, and they're doing really well in fifth grade, but they might be ready for things that are above and beyond fifth grade. So, that's what we're trying to do as a district, is provide opportunities for all students to grow overall. All right. Curriculum review cycle, we have a six-year cycle. This year was wellness. The intention was that this entire year would be focused just on the wellness, but we found out that Massachusetts was finally going to update their comprehensive health curriculum frameworks. It hadn't been done since 1999, so it was definitely time for them to do so. We were fortunate enough to have two of our staff members work with DESI. Michelle Amaral and Sarah Moore have been attending meetings all year long, and they are able to bring back information to us about where the state is going in terms of these frameworks. And they're gonna cover all types of topics, from health to physical education to social, emotional learning. So, we are using those ideas to develop our pre-K to 12 curriculum, but also looking at them with our district plan. And guidance, health, physical education have all been involved in those meetings. They don't expect that those frameworks are gonna be completely done until the summertime or maybe even the fall. So, we've had to kind of shift a little bit of that wellness cycle is gonna go into next year, so you'll hear more about it again. But next year's review cycle is gonna be focused on history, social science, and foreign language. Those frameworks were finalized last July, so this year, our teachers have been really digging in, getting used to the changes, figuring out where things need to shift around, and I'm in talks right now with a lot of the grade levels about possible potential pilots for the fall to look at different materials that are out there to address all the new standards. The biggest changes are the civics. There's a heavy civics focus in grade eight, and there's gonna be civics projects required by the state at the eighth grade level and also the high school level. And those... More information is coming out as they roll out from the state. The final thing that's the biggest change is those seven practice standards. Within the framework, they have identified seven skills that students need to work on, rather than just the rote memorization of history topics and dates and maps. And it's now incorporating the ability to use civic knowledge and questioning and research and looking at credibility of documents, looking at point of view, so that not only does a student just study the content that's in front of them, they're able to apply it to a number of different portions of social studies, but also their life moving forward. And lastly, embedded in that is the literacy standards. So, social studies teachers also have responsibility to incorporate literacy standards, because reading a historical document is different than reading a piece of literature. So, there are skills that go along with that. So, we're gonna spend all of next year looking for the best resources, best supports for those teachers to be able to implement the new standards.
So, do we have a new wellness curriculum for 1920, or is it on hold because of the state?
The one...
So, we'll have a wellness action plan, which will have specific objectives that will fall under nutrition, health, PE, wellness, both mental health wellness and staff wellness. So, we'll have those objectives in place for our wellness plan, but the curriculum will continue to evolve because the teachers will use it next year to look at the new standards and then make a plan to decide what resources may be available. So, as Mrs. McPartland said, it'll be a little bit of a hybrid, because the money we will dedicate to health and wellness will fall to youth, because we don't have on the plan, we'll use a little bit for some of the social studies that we already are aware of, and so that next year, we can dedicate some of the funds that will be allocated to social studies and foreign language to that.
And when does this new civics requirement go into effect?
Starting next year.
Right. They're saying next year. Yeah, that's what they said. And they're gonna be... I get all the updates from DESI, and they're gonna be giving out samples of what these civics projects could look like, and they're also gonna be sending out their potential timeline for implementing it. But their intention is that we should be starting these civics projects.
All right. Thanks, Dan.
So, the district has spent a significant amount of time on writing this year, and all three schools have made significant contributions to that writing progress. Just to highlight some of those things, in Central School, they completed and accomplished nine common writing prompts per grade level. They also designed rubrics in order to evaluate the students' writing, and they worked on discussing a shared language and practices around writing. So, for example, the district has been trained in using empower writing, and with empower writing, it comes its own language. There are templates that come with it. They talk about Fred's and Samor's and announcements. And if you don't know the program, you may not know what they're talking about. But if we use that language as teachers, starting in pre-K all the way up to the high school, kids will know and become used to that language, and it becomes a common language. We found that's really important to do, and we're working on taking that at Central School and using that as our foundation and transferring those practices to the Mitchell School in a developmentally appropriate way. So, based on what Central did this year, they developed the nine prompts based on what DESI requires in the three types of writing. So, three narrative, three expository, and three opinion or argumentative. We're going to do the same thing at the Mitchell School. Mr. Gentile, myself, Mrs. McPartland, we have had numerous discussions about really unifying the district in our processes and our language, and we decided for next year to also do nine common writing prompts and develop those rubrics and make sure those writings go across the content areas. So, some will focus on math, some in science. So, kids could write a narrative in science if they're studying plants about the life of an apple and what it's like to kind of go from the beginning to the end, and it also will demonstrate knowledge in that content area as well. So, we look to the future for our teachers to develop those prompts that are engaging and will entice them to write and also develop those rubrics to go along with it. We also are developing that shared language and practices. One of the things that we focused on this year, and we keep going deeper and deeper with the writing, is writing conferences and how to conference best with students and what's most effective in transferring it to their final products. So, we've looked at different checklists that teachers use. We look at the conversations that teachers are having when it comes to writing, and we're trying to find out what is the most effective way. We're going to continue to delve deeper into that next year as well. And then at the junior senior high school, they're looking at exploring those literacy standards that Mrs. McPartland had talked about into the content areas that are very specific and specialized. So, just incorporating more writing opportunities and more quick writes and more technical writing in the subject areas in which they teach. We found in general, there are certain practices, based on our research discussion and our delving deep into writing this year, that we want kids to continue to do more of in the 1920 school year, and that is journaling. So, one of the things that we had discussions with our special area teachers about, because if everyone's invested in writing, everyone's going to be doing writing, our special area teachers this year focused on writing in their content areas. So, kids wrote in music. They wrote in phys ed, in art, in wellness, and the prompts that they came up with were very creative. So, for example, in the music department, they would say things like, okay, you're on an island. You're on a deserted island. You have one instrument. What instrument would it be and why? So, there were things that enticed students to write. That's another thing that we came up with. We have to develop engaging writing prompts for our students, things that will entice them to write. In a discussion with our computer teachers, they were thinking about prompts. One that they came up with that enticed students is... Minecraft is a very popular, as well as Fortnite, video game. Explain why it's so popular and engaging. So, again, they were all excited to write about that, of course. Then we're talking about differentiating in writing. Those are some things we'll be discussing as we move forward. We also decided to use editing marks that are common across the grade levels. So, if they needed to add a capital, a period, there are editing marks that go along with the John Collins program that we used to use, and we're all going to be incorporating those for next year. So, a lot of work in writing. Very proud of our accomplishments, but as always, a lot more to do, a lot more to achieve, and we set those standards really high.
Very happy to see the kids getting all of this writing in. So, there were a few of us at the Young Authors Day.
Yes.
And those third graders are so insightful in there. I was listening... Well, and Rob was in my group. He was in my room.
I yelled at him.
Listening to the kids with their writing was just... I was very impressed. They did a great job.
I was too. I agree.
That's great, and it's a wonderful activity that our third-grade teachers do, and our kids get really excited about it, our third graders. So, thank you for coming today.
Writing. They'll use that for the rest of their lives.
Absolutely.
I'm very happy that we have this initiative in the district.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next thing I just want to talk about is summer reading. So, the district has decided to go along with the theme of responsibility this year. It is a requirement of all students to do their summer reading. As we know, reading is very important, too, just like the writing is. We don't want to have that summer slide, so again, we want to try to make it fun for our students, but also connect it to something that we value here in the district, and that is responsibility. So, this summer, Central School, pre-K to 2, they're going to all be reading at those grade levels the same book, Pigs Die by Mark Teague, and they'll be answering the question, how did Wendell show he was responsible? Now, they can do that in multiple ways, as Dr. Williams talked about with the UDL, and this is also for the Mitchell School and the junior senior high school. They have choices and options of ways to demonstrate how the character or how the book showed responsibility. They could make a video. They could do a rap song. They could write about it if they want to. They could write a poem. This is all about UDL and the choices. We really want to target their own way to demonstrate what they learned and what they understood. Central Schools also be logging their minutes. They want to log 500 minutes on Scholastic Rita Palooza. At the Mitchell and Junior Senior High, as I said, we will recommend some titles. So, there are some kids that will say, I'm not really sure what book demonstrates responsibility. We have some title choices for them, or they can pick their own. It's the same at the junior senior high school, and then submit a choice-based response on how the book demonstrated responsibility. So, we're excited about this for our kids. Gives them an opportunity to read. They could always read more as well. They wanted to read more than one book, but it is something that we are requiring of our students this year.
They're doing that trivia thing again.
No trivia this year. They are doing a... I know that Central School is doing a scavenger hunt as an optional activity.
And there'll probably be some paper going home so that the students have some...
Right. I assume something will be going home shortly?
Central School has sent everything home. Was it today? Yep. Everything went home today at Central School. In order to be green, the Mitchell and high school are... It's electronic. It's live on the website right now. And tomorrow, there will be a message going home to all families that summer reading information is live.
Via email.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, good. Yep. And so, and that... And there will also be paper copies at both of the main offices, actually, all three main offices and at the public library.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Well, that's our update. I'm going to introduce now Mrs. Karen Clifford, who's going to do the social, emotional piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy summer.
Thank you. Same to you. Thanks for having us.
I'm gonna visit next Wednesday.
Excellent. Comes to us.
Welcome to you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Just quickly, at a glance, I know I've reported a couple of times, I just wanted to talk specifically about some counselor PD that we did around the health and wellness curriculum review that we undertook this year. We did some... We went to a training on break free from depression, which was actually recommended to us by a parent from this community that works at a different school. It's had a very successful program. He was very kind and shared all of his information with us. We went... Four counselors and myself went up to his school and saw it in action. So, it is a prevention suicide... I'm sorry, suicide prevention program that we are going to roll out in the fall to eighth grade and 12th grade. And we'll continue doing eighth and 12th grade until we get to a point where we're just doing eighth grade.
No, nine, 10, 11 is age 10.
So, this year, we'll do eighth and 12th, and the next year, those eighth graders will be ninth graders. We'll do eighth and 12th again until we build up, so that we're just doing it in eighth grade every year. We've done a lot of social, emotional learning. We've done some trauma intervention PD. The guidance department, myself and Tessa Ryan, the school psychologist, put together some parent community education presentations. We did social, emotional learning. We did anxiety, depressions, transitions, and mood changes. The entire guidance department in the enrichment classes for seventh and eighth grade did lessons on resilience, task initiation, self-esteem, social thinking, emotional control. We presented the bullying, on bullying, and we introduced the Stop It app this year, and we did planning and prioritization. One of the handouts that I gave you, this one, the colors, is a new platform panorama that we're gonna do a student survey. We will do it by the end of this year. It's gonna be district-wide.
I'm sorry. I don't think I got that one.
Were we missing something?
One was supposed to go that way, and one was supposed to go the other way.
I didn't get this one.
Nope. Nope. It's right there. You have it. Turn it over.
It's all of it. All three pages. Yeah, you have it.
No, there's not a third page yet.
Can we just hold up the...
You show... Hold it up so I know what it looks like.
It's missing this page. Missing this page.
That's mine.
Yeah, but ours doesn't have that page.
Oh, yeah. This is mine. This is not for you.
It's very similar to what I shared with you.
Right. I was gonna say, didn't we just see this?
Yep. So, you probably just saw it, but we're gonna do it. It's gonna be attached to School Brains, and it's gonna give us that kind of information that a council will be able to track their whole caseload or one student at a time or grade level. It's gonna... That, I think, is gonna be instrumental data for us to use to target that middle 60% that we were talking about earlier.
Karen, is this gonna be... It's the same platform that Gina introduced. But is it gonna be actually... The reports itself gonna be connected completely? So, it's just gonna be two separate areas but connected?
What's two separate areas?
Yeah, it'll be one view.
Yeah, okay. Sorry.
And you can see their academic...
And social mo... Okay.
So, it's gonna be connected to our information system of School Brains, and when we do the survey, it's gonna...
From a committee perspective, we're gonna see this as aggregate data or individual data?
We wouldn't share individual.
Like, I wanna look... Yeah, like, I can see my sons, my daughters, but we'll see... We'll see aggregate.
But we would be sharing...
Yes. Grade level and progress and data, yeah.
Do parents see this platform? I forget. I know you said it. We talked about it, but I forget now.
Right. We haven't gotten that far in the discussion as to whether this would then ultimately be something that teachers would use to share with parents as we get more familiar with it. That's valuable to give parents this view, but we haven't even gotten that far for staff to even know how to utilize it. So, we want to make sure that we were proficient in it before we started using it in conferences.
Gotta start sometime.
Right. So, as a guidance counselor, I see myself, as we roll it out, being able to have that conversation with an individual parent and sharing that data, putting it through the portal where a parent is not gonna necessarily know how to navigate it. I don't see that happening right yet until we have some sort of education. So, grade six, class of 2025, student orientations will be held Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, June 25, 26, and 27. June 25, 26, and 27, 9:15 to 12:15. We are doing our grade eight, class of 2023 orientation to freshman year, will be Wednesday, August 21st. As I mentioned, for next year, we will be doing the Break Free From Depression as a pilot, we're going to start with students in grades eight through 12. We will be doing a presentation to the community, we will also be doing a staff training before we roll it out to students, as Mr. Prey said, so we want to make sure that the teachers are on board with the language that the students are going to be hearing in this presentation so that everybody's using that common language. We have a community service in the, in the works, do we?
Hoping that we bring it to the June 20th meeting.
Okay, so I'm working with Ms. Pennington about community service and looking forward to a graduation requirement, so we've done some preliminary work, I think you have a proposal in your policies group. One thing that I'm going to be working on over the summer is to create a bulletin board for the community to be able to post those opportunities, because once we roll this out, we're going to have to have those opportunities for students, as well as to work with the student groups that we have in our building to promote those service opportunities.
So, Karen, just to clarify, the community, the board will actually be accessible by the community, and they can make their posting opportunities, or will it come through you, through guidance?
So, I want to say yes to the first part, but I need to.
It's still to be determined.
Meet with Erin Fisher, our guru, to see if, if that is going to be able to be posted by the community, because I'd like it to be on our website. So, I don't know if it will be an access problem, it might have to go through me. I also want to have a physical board in the cafeteria so that students could, you know, grab a phone number, jot down some information.
I just want to capture that correctly, so we can talk a little more.
Is that clear?
Yes.
The other thing that I passed out is something that two of my guidance counselors worked on this year as a, for one of their Smaracles, and it's an interactive community resource So, what I gave you, this is this one, on the left-hand side, you can see different resource categories, a resource description, and then there's a link. At the top, you can see there's two buttons, one for a resource category, and one for school age. So, if you look at the second page, you can see the dropdown for the resource category, so it's all the different categories of resources. Do you see what I mean? And then, the next page, it shows school age, so it's going to be categorized for Central School age group, East grade, Royal Junior Senior High School, and Mitchell.
And who has access to this?
So, this is going to be on the website, it will be interactive, so it'll be everybody.
That's great.
So, as a parent of a student in kindergarten, so this came off of our parent education, we did not have a huge turnout for that, and I understand that people have children at home and have different responsibilities, so what we did was we posted all of our PowerPoint presentations online, and this is just a way to sort of combine all those resources into one place. So, a parent of a Central School student who might be thinking their child has anxiety can search specifically for anxiety for that age group, come up with a list of books to read to that student, different community resources that might be available. So, this is going to be something that's going to continue to develop and grow, and it will have to be something that we will have to continue to update.
Very quickly, an awesome anxiety library in her office, I remember.
Oh, yeah, we're going to link into that.
Do you anticipate this going on the website?
I am hoping to put together a letter explaining to parents how to use it and, and what the benefits would be over the summer and have it roll out in the fall. I also have to work with the counselors in the other buildings so they, they become familiar with how to update for their age group.
Thank you. I think that's great.
So, they can add resources anytime, is that what you mean by update for their program? Yeah, no, that's awesome.
We want to update them, we want to change them, we want to add them, we get a lot of those, those mailings, and we try to disseminate that information throughout the district. This will be a place where we can just plug it in.
Thank you.
So, also new for next year is that we are partnering with North River Collaborative, and Mr. Phelan may talk about this a little bit in his presentation, so we are going to have some social work interns come into the buildings. We're going to have two at the high school and one at the Mitchell. We just got word today that we're going to meet with the high school candidates, one is a male, one is a female, they will cover all five days and cross over on one day. So, they do three days each.
They're both three days, nice.
They do three days each, so one day, they'll both be there, the other two days, well, so we'll have five days coverage with a social work intern in the high school, which is awesome.
Three-day candidates are way better than the two-day candidates, they're like, they are, I mean, just the ones that want the three-day opportunities are usually way better counselors.
And what was nice is one of them actually reworked her schedule so that she could accommodate the other days if the first person wasn't going to do. And then, at the Mitchell, we'll have one three-day candidate, so we'll have three days of coverage at the Mitchell.
Now, do your counselors within each school supervise them, or does, is it a central person that supervises them?
So, my understanding, what we talked about, is that I would be the supervisor? Well, I will be the point person for the district that are supervised by North River, so we don't have to provide that hour of supervision.
You have, you have the meeting with their North River supervisor, talk about their progress and everything.
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Yep. So, that would be a great addition to our staff. And then, also news, I'm going to have a parent orientation for grade six upcoming parents on next Wednesday at 6:30. The reason I added that is I did the student orientations last year, and then when the students went home, they had provided their parents with some misinformation, and I got a lot of phone calls over the summer, so I had to say the same thing.
Sixth grade, outgoing sixth grade or incoming sixth grade? Outgoing sixth.
Outgoing sixth up to the seventh. So, I thought I'll give the information to the parents so that when the students come home, everybody knows what they're.
Students don't go, but just answer.
Parents will come on Wednesday evening, students are going to come that Tuesday and Thursday at the end of June, and they're also going to come to Step Up Gay on Monday, so.
Karen, just of note, because we had brought this up when Mrs. Fisher was here and doing her presentation on all of the great tech stuff she does, we had made the point that when students come up from sixth grade up to seventh grade, the communication to parents kind of changes somewhat depending on, not depending on the teacher per se, but for example, there's a lot more Twitter activity, and I had talked to a couple parents in like a community forum, not related to the school at all, but they happened to be in it, and they were saying how, you know, they had concerns that they don't allow their kids to have social media, and they're concerned about how communication is done at this level. So, we had mentioned to Mrs. Fisher, perhaps, you know, from a tech standpoint, that could be something passed along to the parents so they don't have this great fear of the unknown, because a lot of parents, like, "I don't even know how to use Twitter," and it's not necessarily widely used here at the high school, but it's used enough, so I don't know if that's built into the orientation, it might be just, I don't know.
So, I'm not sure I follow your question. In the orientation, am I providing them with information of how to access Twitter?
Well, not really how to access it, but just the indication that communication changes a little from that school coming up here.
So, that is one of the threads, as the, as the district guidance director, I have been trying to solidify and carry from building to building, so I did send a letter out, or actually, Mr. Gentile sent the letter out for me to all seventh, sixth grade parents regarding all the transition activities that we were doing, both at the Mitchell School as well as up here, so all of that information went home in a letter, and it was emailed. I would, I continue to do that up here, I do not tweet.
I'm not asking you to tweet.
I would love to also see like a, well, the Central Times, the middle school connection, like, something like that for the high school that, not necessarily distribute it, but put up on the web or something, because it's so hard to keep track of everything unless you have like multiple.
So, one of the things we did last year was we made a district calendar that's on the website, on the main page, and each school is represented in a different color. So, if you have a student in just one building, you could click just that one color and see those activities, if you have students in multiple buildings, you can, you could highlight the Mitchell and the high school and see so that you would, we can be aware of when we're cross scheduling so that we become a little bit more aware of that. We might not want to have our art show on the same day as his concert at the Mitchell.
But even for parents of these younger kids who haven't had a child come up to the school, to understand that there's a lot of information on the website and just to get familiar with, because I think they rely on Central Times, they rely on, you know, not more personalized, but more available communication, whereas at this level, it's a little bit different to navigate, and I think some parents are taken by surprise, like, "Oh, my gosh, how come there's no information? How come I didn't know about this? How come I didn't know about that?" Well, it's, it's there, you just have to reorient yourself.
Good point, okay. I'll try to figure that out.
Well, the calendar, I didn't even know that existed. I think that's great.
Yeah.
I didn't even know that was out there.
Thank you, Ms. Clifford.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Have a good summer.
I know, I know you're still there, I'll see you.
We have Dr. Gina Williams and Mrs. Deb Nichols to talk about professional development. Welcome.
Thank you, and welcome to the new members of the committee. This evening, Dr. Williams and I are just going to kind of wrap up our year in professional development. I know a very important puck dropped about an hour ago, so we will try to roll our way through this.
I don't know what you're referring to.
We'll try to roll our way through this. As we've said over the course of many years, the professional development is the tie that binds all of the parts of the strategic plan together. We provide professional development for technology to make that a successful initiative. We provide professional development for social emotional learning to make that successful as well as the instruction and curriculum. So, we're really the overarching piece that ties everybody together. So, we've had another successful year, spending money, Title II Grant. This year, we were awarded $45,888. Teachers requested a wide variety of workshops and other events to attend that we were able to allow them to do based on that funding. Every Professional Development Academy meeting begins with going through the request forms and allotting people and allowing people to go to the trainings that they would like to go to. So, it ranged from traumatized child, the American Speech and Language National Conference was in Boston this year, so all of our speech and language pathologists were able to attend that, which was very exciting for them. Parent, Mrs. Clifford's staff went to cognitive behavioral therapy toolbox for children and adolescents, mask U, STEAM trainings, there's just such a wide variety that kind of target each teacher, their content area, and their passions with education. We also provided Alice training for all of the employees in the district, and when I say all, I mean all, the cafeteria workers, everybody that is in our school, nurses, custodians, all the staff, teaching assistants. So, that was a very widespread and much-needed training for all of us, and we were also able to have meetings during the PTO to explain a bit more to parents and address the concerns that they had about how we were training their kiddos. We've had the UDL training, as Dr. Williams mentioned earlier, it's the first year of a three-year commitment that the district has with that, with the CAST program, and as she mentioned, there'll be another whole cohort going through the first year of programming next year, so I'm really excited about that, because rumor has it, I'm part of the cohort. Really, thanks. We also had approximately 100 in-house PD opportunities, we had Ready Math training this year, we had iPads in the classroom, which was run by a staff member, Mini Maker Spaces also run by staff members, Google Classroom, social emotional training, safety care training that's put on by staff here. Again, so it's not only outside, we're also able to provide quality professional development for teachers within the confines of our district. We had several guest speakers this year, and it was kind of a social emotional sandwich. We had Pam Guaramone, who kicked off our years, and she was the happiness expert, so she talked to all of us and built us all up for the year about how to be happy and joyful in our career and with our classrooms and interacting with our students. Then, we had Joel Restuccia at Jacobs Common, they were the traumatized children. So, then, it got pretty heavy, and how are we going to help these students that, we don't know what they've come in from in the morning, you know, maybe they had to get their little brother and sister dressed, maybe they had to listen to their parents arguing, maybe the police were at their house that night. We don't know what children are coming to school with and what barriers they have emotionally to learning. So, we had a really hard day as far as your heart goes, at least mine, that day, and then we beefed ourselves back up again with happiness with Norm Bosio, who was hysterical, he was a great speaker, and his mantra for all of us was, "Do what you love and love what you do." And if you're not doing what you love and you're here, you probably shouldn't be doing it. So, it was a, it was a great rally point for being reflective on your practice and how important we are in the lives of children and how blessed we are to be able to be a part of their lives every day. For the first time, we put on a book study, and it was about UDL. Mrs. McPartlin and Mrs. Fleming led those book studies, and we were able to invite staff from other districts to come in and join the book studies. So, that was a new venture for us this year, it was really exciting. And looking ahead, we have granted out all of our mini-grants, again, we have spent all of our money. One of the mini-grants went to Deanna Monroe, who is going to be putting on a responsive classroom training, it'll be a four-day training that's open to the Central School staff as well as the Mitchell School staff and how to implement the responsive classroom techniques and strategies. We also have teachers working on creating choice boards, which are related to the UDL learning, and we also have staff from the high school going to trainings to be able to be certified to teach the AP courses. So, that's exciting for all buildings in the district. We have our curriculum review cycle coming up in 1920, just as Mrs. McPartlin mentioned earlier, we have the social studies committees, we're working on inclusive practices, we'll continue to do that as we journey towards becoming the best that we can be and including all students in their learning every day. We spent some time this year, and we're just in the development, the development stages of the EB University, which would be an opportunity for our staff to provide workshops and professional development for other staff members running workshops on different topics that they would write a curriculum for and then present it to staff. We're looking at it being available to earn PDPs and potentially, what do you, what do you name them, Viking?
Viking credits that would possibly lead to them moving on the salary scale. So, by accumulating Viking credits, by taking these series of workshops, it would be an opportunity for staff to then use those credits to put towards movement on the salary. So, we're developing it.
Certainly, it would need to be something that would need to be negotiated because it would be part of contractual language.
And as Dr. Williams told you at a previous meeting, we've been working on the Alternative Learning Day initiative, in case of inclement weather when students couldn't come to school, giving them an option to continue their learning in a different way. So, we'll continue to wait on DUCY and see what they come down with as far as regulations on that, and as we learn more about that, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one question. My question is, it might be a surprise, so maybe you don't even know yet, and it might be a surprise you might not want to say. Any idea who the guest speaker is for September for opening day?
So, we've reached out to Dr. Katie Novak for Universal Design Hall. She's very sought after, so we're crossing our fingers, but that's what our hope is at this point.
Can I come?
Sure, absolutely. We're all.
Mrs. Davis, I just want to echo what Dr. Legault said earlier on, you know, I know you were happy enough to have your daughter graduate high school, and I don't think what she does know is that I have a longstanding relationship with your family from years ago, and I was actually honored enough to be, I got an email in February from the administration at Middle Bar High School to invite me to the graduation because I have a really special relationship with a lot of the kids that were in Erin's class as they made their way up through middle school, and so they kind of stuck me at the edge of the stage as the kids got their diplomas and I got hugs and handshakes and high fives and tears, and I can honestly say, it was the most touching day I've had as an educator, to see those kids and see them grow up into young men and women, and your daughter Erin was included in that, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Sarah. It was a great day for all of us, and now, tonight, she's at BSU for her freshman orientation, and she is now the little fish in the big pond.
She's texting you like, "Mom, pick me up."
Uh-huh, Mom, what do I do? What are the last four digits of my social security number? All those guys.
She wants to be a teacher.
She is going into early childhood education.
Great.
Very proud of her.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Happy summer.
Thank you. Thank you. I was remiss, Erin Fisher is one of our other facilitators, technology, she was here at the last, last school committee meeting. We can't do this without all of them, all of them, I want, I thank them this evening, All of them, I thank them this evening. But again, as much as schedules are so important and as much as communicating what we need to communicate together and having monies to allocate and to do things with and have a good budget, the things that we listened to in the second half of this meeting is what we're here for. And to watch Jen McPartlin and Deb Dupre, Karen Clifford, and Dr. Williams, and Deb Nichols, and Erin Fisher the last time, and John Phelan, I'm going to get him up. He's going to go one more time and just give us a quick sped special education roundup. This is what we're here for. And we'll continue the communication. We heard it loud and clear. A shell is a shell. A shell is a shell. It's what is inside the shell is what's important. And watching tonight and seeing that the elementary school grades one and two are at the 97 and 98 percentile, and that the Mitchell School, we saw so many gains this year in growth with the students because of the resiliency that Mrs. McPartlin has talked with all the teachers about how Deb Dupre has gone in and talked to the students about being resilient. And now Mr. Gentile bringing the teachers in and talking to them about, this is what it is about instruction. When I talk to you as the leader of the building, the instructional component is where we're at to raise, to enhance growth for students. Students can be really bright, but they can get stuck. And the only way they're going to get growth is by instructional leadership in the classroom. You saw great leaders here talk about all the great things that we're doing, that they are doing, that are intact, that are on the docket. It's a shell. We're going to listen. We're not going to stop. We're going to keep going forward. But maybe next time, I'd like to put them first because this is what education is about. And it shouldn't be left to a room of just us and administrators who work all the time. And the faculty is great, and the teachers are magnificent, and everybody does a great job, and we work, Dr. Williams works really hard, too. But this is wrong. It should go first for next year. They do a lot of work for us on a daily basis, and I'd like them to go first from now on. I don't need a superintendent's corner. Put them up in front. Let us watch them.
Most definitely do.
And let them talk to everybody, so everybody gets to see them. And if we want an open forum to talk about schedules or communicating our new social-emotional platform or whatever, let them come. Let Deb Nichols come and tell us about the professional development opportunities that will help us with special emotional or social-emotional. Let Deb Dupre come in and talk about the writing and the writing prompts that aren't just at Mitchell School, that are for a transition to seventh and eighth grade. Let Kate Byrne come in and say, "There's a reason we're 96, 97, and 98 in one and two." Ask her what it is. She'll tell you. It's a lot of hard work over there. If you haven't watched Kate talk to a teacher, it's intense. And it's not intense because she's being mean, and it's not intense because she's arguing. It's being intense because she knows they can do it. And K, pre-K, one, two, I've learned a lot about in the last four years with Dr. Williams and a lot from Kate and Deb Nichols and a lot just being around that because I was high school. I was seven through 12. So I get this. But this is what we're here for, and put them up in front.
I'll say that.
Please.
I'll say that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, committee, I report to you public comment as the very last item before we adjourn. I don't see any reason why we.
We can do that, too. Next up, we have Mr. John Phelan.
I'm trying to keep it short and sweet.
Well, you've got two minutes.
After all that.
Listen, this is why we got this guy.
You don't need to bang a gavel.
Go fly, Zan Jake.
Two minutes.
Stop, tag, stop.
Go ahead. He'll get it down.
So for this year, I would say special education is definitely moving in the right direction. As a district, we're moving in the direction of inclusion for all students, becoming an inclusive district. The UDL initiatives that across the district are being done, the Universal Design for Learning initiatives, are really kind of helping to open that up and really helping all kids and all learners. As Ms. Clifford talked about earlier, bringing in the social work interns, I think is going to be great for our social-emotional pieces for our kids. Those interns are phenomenal. I've heard nothing but good things about them. They do work in a couple of the districts. And talking with my colleagues in those other districts, they have a lot of respect for them. So I think it'll be great for our kids all around. We're moving, going to continue to move next year into that inclusive role. We're looking to develop so that we have more teachers in there, special education teachers in those inclusive roles. And if you have any other questions, let me answer them for you, please. Ask them away.
Does anyone have any questions?
Nope.
I thank you for all your hard work. Mrs. Dupre's hard work.
If you have any questions, email them. Jay Phelan.
That's it. I'll get them out to you.
PS.net.
No problem. Thanks, guys.
I thank you for everyone's hard work. I know you work hard every day. Thank you. On that note, on Superintendent Legault's note, which I had planned to do this, and now it just hits at home, I would like to take action, the action item about the Central School and Gordon W. Mitchell School Student Parent Handbook, the action item, I would like to take that and move it up to the top of the action item so that we get that done.
All these poor people sitting here.
The action items section.
We'd love to see it, though, Kate.
So I'm doing it out of order. Have you all had a chance to look at the?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's no other.
Hold on. I have one little edit I was going to ask about. Hold on. Sorry. Central Elementary School, Middle School, can we check that to Mitchell School? I know that's minute, but.
Oh, is it on the front?
Yeah, on the front page. Sorry.
What was the question?
On the front page, it says Middle School, and I know we changed the name of the school to the Mitchell School.
Oh, yes. I think that was in his, that was in Mr. Gentile's thing, that everywhere, the.
No, the Central School.
Yeah, but it's on the Central School one.
Oh, no. Oh, I see. Okay. The address.
Right.
So on that, and these are the only ones, there's no other changes. No other change.
I didn't have any.
I'm going to assume. So on that note, I would take a motion to approve the recommended changes to the Central School and Gordon W. Mitchell School for the FY '20 Student Parent Handbook.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Teresa, second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I would take a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from May 9th and May 23rd, 2019.
So moved.
I'll second, but I have to abstain from May 9th.
Right.
So let's do them separately. I'd take a motion from, make a motion for our school committee meeting minutes approving them from May 9th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Tim, second by Rob, but I guess I read, you sound the same.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
I couldn't tell who was who. And I would take a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from May 23rd, 2019.
So moved. Second.
That was a triple tie. I know who Teresa was. So moved by Teresa, second by?
Second.
Rob, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
So Gordon abstained and Tim abstained? Okay, thank you. And I would take a motion to approve the Council's Payable Warrant 50V dated June 5th, 2019.
So moved.
Moved by Gordon, second.
Teresa, second.
By Teresa, all in favor?
I don't even know anymore. I'm tied.
Aye.
And at this time, I would take a motion to approve 49 PS dated 5/29/2019.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Gordon, second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I was going, I'm going to take this diploma thing and put it last because we might be talking about that. So the next item, I'm moving to the next item after the diploma discussion. I would like to read something before we take any action. So the attorney-client privilege belongs to the school committee as a body and not to any individual member. The attorney cannot waive the privilege without the committee's authorization. The committee can always decide to waive its privilege as a body if it decides it wants to do so. No individual member can waive the privilege, however. It would be a violation of the Conflict of Interest law. That would be Chapter 268A, Section 23C, Number 2, for an individual member to disclose information received by him or her as a member of the committee, which is protected by the attorney-client privilege. So on that note.
So before we move to that, can I make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we move to waive the attorney-client privilege regarding this matter, as we were recently advised, so we can have an open discussion about this measure.
Moved by Rob, second by Teresa.
Which topic are you talking about?
It's the attorney-client privilege.
So I'm moving to waive our privilege right now so we can discuss how we were advised about this measure.
You're talking about Article 11?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Moved by Tim, second by Teresa. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not in favor of that because usually attorneys recommend not to go against their attorney-client privilege. So I don't know if our, one of our school committee attorneys wants to weigh in on.
Yeah, I was going to say, I didn't actually vote on that one yet. I'd like to do it from the attorneys rather than.
Say that again. So you cannot give us advice during open session. But it's usually, I spoke to Mr. Attorney Foskett today, and I also spoke to Nick Domnello, our attorney, sitting right beside me today, and it's not recommended. Both attorneys recommended, it's not recommended to go against the attorney-client privilege. So just so that's out there.
I think on this matter, I would agree about.
I agree.
But I don't think that this particular matter, the, just my opinion, I don't think it's a big deal to have an open discussion on it.
Well, with regard to Article 11, when, under what circumstances can we discuss it?
Right.
Right.
If it's not here, where is it? So do we have to have an executive session?
It doesn't fall under.
I asked about that, too. It doesn't fall under executive session either.
So to Tim's point, I agree that we have to, I'm not going to vote on anything that I haven't had the chance to discuss with the rest of the committee to get, I know my thoughts, but I, as a committee, the strength comes from the diverse opinions that we all sit around the table with, so I'd like to hear it. So I don't know how we get around that. These guys don't go.
I would agree that on most matters, I would follow through on our attorney's advice. I think in this matter, we need to talk about it. And there wasn't anything particularly sensitive in our attorney's advice that I saw that couldn't be discussed, or at least that we can't talk about.
Teresa, you voted out? I don't know. I didn't catch everybody.
Yeah, no, I voted in favor, too. I know how I'm going to vote, but I read it again before coming to the meeting, and I just think because it's a collective vote, we do need to be able to discuss. I mean, I know how I'm going to vote. That's not the question. But I think there needs to be a little bit of a collaborative discussion so we can say we discussed it and didn't vote as a whole. I mean, we all read it, right? We all.
So you said yes, Gordon?
I would say yes, discuss it.
And I say no because I like to go with what the lawyer says.
Yes, discuss it.
Rob?
Still thinking.
I say yes.
We got it.
You got four, really?
Well, I think you have enough. I'm going to say, I'm going to say yes, but it doesn't matter because I think we have enough votes.
Okay, so open for discussion.
Irrelevant, how I.
I would only clarify, and you can make this motion, just that you're only waiving attorney-client privilege for this narrow.
Yes.
Yes.
Just discuss this one thing, not.
Understood.
Exactly. I was thinking about the slow argument.
So if I could just add a comment, I don't have much to say, but I just have one comment I wanted to make. There is, I did some asking around, and there is a process when town bylaws are amended by which the Attorney General's Office takes those bylaws under advisement and researches if those bylaw adjustments are in violation of the US state constitutions, local laws, conflicts of interest, conflicting with other town bylaws, so on and so forth. And I know that our attorney's advice mentioned that there could be conflicts, but I feel that regardless of how we feel about this, and regardless of whether it passes town meetings, that's the process the state has for amending bylaws. And to say that it could be a conflict of interest isn't reason enough for me to say, "Vote against this." There's a process in place to decide if there's a conflict. So regardless of whether we think it's a good idea or not, the process is in place, and that should be allowed to happen if it passes through. Make myself clear on that?
You said exactly what I would have said. The AG will reject anything that is in violation of law.
Regardless of whether we think it's a good idea. But we're not talking about whether it's legal enough. We're talking about whether or not we're going to recommend it or not.
Well, however, the privilege that we just read was relative to whether or not there could be a potential conflict, and the attorney.
But I think the article on the agenda is whether or not we recommend it as a body, not.
Well, the article on the agenda is telling us, telling us that we go in favor.
Can I finish, please? We're not here to argue whether or not it's legal or not, whether it's constitutional or not. We're here to say whether or not we agree or disagree.
But I think Tim's point was.
Our legal advice is that it might not be, and therefore, we should vote against it. And that could be one of the arguments that you people could make.
Well, I think that was the agenda.
Well, there are several points.
Whether or not we're going to vote as a body to recommend or not recommend.
A second point that was brought up was that the town administrator historically has pegged the school district to a set percentage, and that's frustrating to try to build a budget, not understanding the needs of the district, and that a new town administrator may be more open. We don't know who the next town administrator is going to be, and I don't want to take a guess that that town administrator is suddenly going to find money for us that we didn't have before. I would hope that one would. But I think, too, suppose that someone in the future is going to be more workable with the school system is, again, not a reason to vote or not vote for a bylaw amendment.
I think that the point that was brought up in the attorney's letter, which has bothered me for a while, and that is, it doesn't matter which part of the equation, which part of the argument you're on, whether you're on the part that says, hey, the schools should be able to vote whatever they vote, and that's the money, or on the town side, which says, hey, we don't have any money, so what are you spending it for, kind of thing. The point he brought up was that it's highly unusual that you get the town meeting, and there hasn't been an agreement between us and the town that says, "We can do this," or "If you're going to push this through, we'll make these adjustments." Because that always, that was always the point that I was trying to wonder, at the town meeting, if we voted yea or nay, or the town voted more, less, whatever, that the town administrator is sitting there saying, "Now what do I do? You voted another $100,000. Everything else is balanced. Now how am I going to?" And then my understanding is, you can't leave town meeting until that gets resolved. So then there has to be the discussion, oh, we're going to get that $100, whatever the number is.
Wouldn't it happen two years? Was it last year or the year before?
Doesn't matter.
Was it last year?
Doesn't matter when it happened.
No, but it has happened.
Right.
No, but I'm telling you, it has happened.
Right. So to me, that's the bigger point, is we need to have a working relationship with the town that this gets resolved, one way or the other, before it gets to the floor of the town hall meeting. And the other point I was confused with is that he said there could be, you know, conflicts or violations in here, but I don't think he elaborated on, so I don't know where they are. I mean, it makes sense to me what's written here, but I'm not a lawyer, but I respect the fact that a lawyer reviewed it and said, "Hold on, there might be a problem with this." So I want to be respectful of that. And my understanding is, our vote is simply, this gets voted on the floor of the town gets voted on the floor of the town, town hall, town meeting, and our vote tonight would just be to say, "Hey, we wanna go on record as saying we don't support this."
I'm assuming they're gonna read, because as they, in, I mean, because they read whether the governing body for that department endorsed or not endorsed the bylaw proposal? So, they would say, "School committee endorsed or not endorsed."
John, that, John, that's how that happens, correct?
Yeah, I believe so.
The moderator does that, right?
Right.
Yeah.
When he reads the word...
He does, yep.
They'll say, "Fincom recommends, school committee recommends, doesn't recommend."
But this is unusual, because, well, I guess not, the fact that it comes from the petition? True, that's, that's the point.
Right, this is by petition.
Right.
So, I don't know that we even need to state an opinion on it. I mean, I know we...
We don't, well, see, so we don't, we, we can decide not to have an, have an opinion as a body, we can decide that, it's up to, it's up to you guys.
Well, at a minimum, if we're gonna make any decision, I'd like to at least amend the language, just rather than say to vote publicly that we do not support it, to say, have it say, we would decide whether to support or not support petitioned Article 11, and then continue with the rest of that language. Is that, that doesn't give us the right to vote yes, that we support it or not support it?
We can vote however we would like, we can change the language.
And follow this, this is in a moot point in five minutes, when four people vote no, then so be it, but I just wanna make sure that...
So, you want to say, to vote, to vote, to state publicly that it does not...
We're gonna vote the same thing, we're just gonna change...
Support or not support?
I would move that the, I would, I would make a motion that the, the votable item is that the committee will decide whether to support or not support petitioned Article 11, which seeks to amend the town's bylaws requiring the process for voting on the school committee's budget and to forward to the town's statement of endorsement or nonendorsement.
Okay.
Did you write that down?
So, I wrote, I wrote, well, I have here, I have, because I just wrote or not support, support or not support, so I just changed it to say, "Action is required for the school committee to vote to state publicly that it does support or not support petitioned Article 11, blah, blah, blah," with the rest of it.
And then, at the end, instead of saying it's statement of no endorsement, it says in statement of endorsement or nonendorsement? Depending which way...
It's statement of no endorsement or, say that again?
Or endorsement or no endorsement. It's 3-3, then we're not making a statement.
Then it fails, right.
Well, no, then we make no statement.
Right.
If I may, I could give you a little information on your concern you had.
Well, so...
Well, I don't know what the protocol is.
Yeah, we have public comments.
Well, right now, we already have the public comments section, so we can't really have, I mean, like...
Why is that? Why can't a person speak to a particular article? Don't, oh, boy, Rob, it's a legitimate question, because it happens at selectments meetings, it's happened at finance committee meetings.
Well, there was a woman who started to speak earlier, and we, we said that, I thanked her for her, I appreciated her comments, that we have our public comments section now.
I understand, but I'm asking, why is that the only time we allow it?
It's parliamentary procedure.
Right, it's our school committee meeting in public.
Parliamentary procedure that you selectively enforce.
No.
Yes.
No, not true.
I would not, I would not, but on this road...
But I'm not arguing about it, so...
But we could win that.
So, so, Rob, you made the motion to, to change this action item, so, Rob voted to, Rob made, excuse me, Rob made the motion to change this action item, so, I mean, excuse me, sorry, Tim made the motion to change this action item, so, I'm gonna say, you made the motion, so, Tim made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Teresa, all in favor to change this action item to read, "Action is required for the school committee to vote to state publicly that it does support or not support petitioned Article 11, which seeks to amend the town's bylaws requiring the process for voting on the school committee's budget and to forward to the town its statement of endorsement or no endorsement." So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And at this time, I would take a motion to move the school committee to vote to state publicly that it does support or not support Article 11, which seeks to amend the town's bylaws requiring the process for voting on the school committee's budget and to forward to the town its statement of endorsement or no endorsement.
Moved.
Moved by, was that you, Tim?
Yes.
You guys sound a lot alike. Moved by Kevin.
Moved.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know what I'm voting on.
Yeah, but are we voting to say yes?
This is the motion that we just rewrote.
Are we gonna support it or not?
So, you have to say yes or no, so you would have to say...
A yes vote is that you're in favor of this, a no vote is that you're not in favor.
So, do we have to individually vote it?
After we'll call.
Okay, so, we have to say endorse or do not endorse. So, we just, I'll just go one by one, because that will be easier. So, we had a move, you, Tim moved it?
I moved it.
And who seconded it?
I'll second it.
Teresa? So, we'll start with Teresa.
What, I'm sorry, what do I have to say?
We're gonna say endorse or not endorse.
So, if you endorse, you want the...
You want this motion to be endorsed for the town meeting.
You want the school committee to say to the town...
We support it.
That we support the Article 11 on the warrant.
Or you could say, "Support or not it's support," right? Support or not support?
Is that right?
Yeah.
I, I say we endorse it just for the purposes of discussion at town meeting.
I think the town meeting is gonna happen, and we're gonna discuss it regardless, so I'm gonna say, "I do not endorse this, I don't think it's necessary."
Endorse.
So, we have a...
Endorse.
Endorse.
Do not endorse.
Not endorse.
Endorse.
Endorse. So, you're endorsing, okay, hold on.
We're endorsing Article 11. We're in support of Article 11.
Okay, Tim and Teresa want it.
Trista, you wanna go, Gordon's thinking?
I do not endorse.
So, that's a no, 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 and two yeses so far.
I'm gonna say, no, I don't endorse, however, not that it matters, once I vote that way, but it's, it, I, I agree with the concept that's here. My concern is, what are the legalities, and the fact that we don't have a town administrator in place, I'd like to think we could come to this, this to me seems reasonable, that we could make this happen with a town administrator, and, and make this process finally make sense, but, so, I'd, I'd say, no, not endorse.
So, that's a four to two.
We're gonna issue a statement that the school committee does not endorse the motion.
Yep.
But we're gonna have a discussion anyway, it's gonna happen.
Well, it's gonna be a town meeting, right? Well, thank you for getting through that. Let's see, not really. Up next, we have, I would require, I mean, I would accept the, I would take a motion to accept the donation, the generous donation of $75 from Amica Companies Foundation to Mrs. McGovern's Classroom for Supplies.
So moved.
Moved by Rob?
Second.
Second by Trista, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and, so we did that one. And the last but not least, I would take a motion after discussion regarding the distribution of diplomas at graduation, so I'd take a motion to, I don't know, that's not even written, I don't, um, just, we need to discuss distribution of diplomas on gradu, at graduation, and decide how, how we feel they should be distributed and by whom, as opposed to, we're like, this has been brought a few times.
Again, it is a very important date. I think past school committee members and school committee members, administration, and if you deem so, if a, if a teacher is asked to come forward by a student in a, in a written form, like what was done at this last graduation, I, I can, I can handle that. When you go outside your school world, or you go outside administration or school committee, you're, that's where you're opening this up to. I think, you know, we had a, I even spoke to the mother, who asked if she could give her diploma. I don't think she was upset, I don't think she was hurt, I think she said, "I saw someone else do it a couple of years ago, let me see if I can give my daughter her gradu..." And she was so proud of her daughter, because when it comes to graduation, that's what you're there for, you wanna watch your son or daughter walk across stage. This is what you do. These long nights, these tough questions, these hard things that you have to go through, this is why you're here, this is why you make these decisions, they're not easy.
I mean, I personally have, have never felt that even as a school committee, that I am...
Worthy?
Right, I definitely think...
Worthy is probably a good word.
I definitely think the principals need to be out there.
An educator thing, and...
Did we talk about this last month? We did.
We didn't resolve it.
Well, we didn't, we didn't go into detail, and there was some...
But I just think that, I would just think that you would keep it there, and I, I don't know if you need policy on it, or...
I think...
That it's an advisement of the school committee, that the school committee delivers the diplomas along with the school's administration, and if the child, if a student of the graduating class writes a written letter that would like to have a teacher from any grade that they've had throughout the district, that it comes before you by May 1st, and you decide on it, that that, it could be Mary, it could be Sandy Tellis from kindergarten, it could be Kate Byrne from Central, it could be Andrew Gentile.
We talked about this like a month ago, and I remember, I remember, I know we didn't vote on it, but I remember saying the only stipulation was that we wanted to say East Bridge Water School Committee, so that someone from Abington did say...
Right, right.
I think the question is, should we actually have a documented policy, or is this just gonna live on in discussion, right?
I think it should just be advisement, because there's gonna be, I mean, the president
Yeah, but let, pick someone else.
Governor.
Education Secretary, the governor calls up and says, you know, because sometimes they do that, they just, you know, or the secretary of state calls up and says, "I would like to come to your graduation." Well, you can't, because we have a policy over here.
Right.
You know, but if it's under advisement, we could say, "We would love to have your secretary," and he, they come in for five minutes, "I'm gonna, you know, see a couple people." I, I just think an advisement, an advisory...
I think...
Sorry, Gordon, go ahead.
No, no, I was, I was just gonna add, I think for future school committee members, ourselves included, and whoever takes our place, is that I, I think some outline available, perhaps not all the way to policy, but some outline as a, as a, as a guidance, to say, "Hey," because you wanna be consistent, you wanna have a thought process behind it, so I'm all for we take under advisement, given these criteria, right? And whether it's just a note in the, in the minutes, or what, I, I think that would suffice.
I agree with that, I just, because the school committee, we have an opportunity to, if nothing else, provide cover for you, maybe 20 years from now, your successor, that it doesn't just rely on you, because some people can't say, "Oh, well, this person gets favoritism, this person doesn't." That the committee can provide cover, political cover.
Sure.
I, I think that's fair and reasonable, and we can talk about advisement, and, you know, bring it to the committee and say, "Hey, you know, these are the folks who showed up on May 1st and had a written letter and brought it in, and these are my recommendations," and we just say, "Okay, great."
So, if it doesn't live in policy, I don't know if we have a memo of understanding, I don't know, I don't know where we'd...
I wouldn't go to policy.
We have operating protocols.
Operating prot, that's good.
May I see, have a recommendation on this stuff? I'm sure every district has it different.
Every district does it differently.
Yeah, I think under the...
I, I talked to my kid, I said, "Hey, do you want me to give you a diploma?" And he said, "I don't, I don't want you to go to my graduation."
I would, yeah, I would say, Andrew, our operating protocol, that's fine.
That's an advisement, yeah.
That's fine.
So, do we...
Yeah, I think it's best to do it that way, because then, who's ever here, whether it's the six of you, or the, or another six, allow them to whatever, you know?
Do what they want.
Okay.
Add it to our operating protocol, so do you want to just vote to add it to our operating protocol, and...
We'll have to draft it.
Okay, so we're gonna end up bringing this back to another, I'm so sick of it.
Why don't we just start talking about graduation 2020?
So, we'll have to draft what it's gonna say, and then, we're into that.
Thank you. Yep, at this time, I would take a motion, I'm gonna table that and bring, come up with some kind of draft on that, our, the action item, and at this time, I would take a motion to adjourn.
But, can I have discussion before we do that? I'm sorry.
What?
It'll only be a second.
What discussion?
No, 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 not discussing that we're gonna end the meeting, maybe he's gonna add it, is that, what, what occurred to me tonight, as everything unfolded, is, I really wanna focus on the positive, and even though there were dissension, people feel strongly about